It's August 19th, 2024. This is the GBOS regular meeting. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors, its committees and subcommittees are subject to the Alaska Open Meetings Act as found in Alaska statute 44.62.310 and Anchorage Municipal Code 1.25 Public Meeting. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors operates under the Girdwood Public Meeting Standards of Conduct. I call this meeting to order at 7 o'clock. This is Brianna Sullivan. I am co-chair and fire department supervisor and temporarily the public safety advisory and roads supervisor. Also in the room.
Mike Edgington, co-chair and housing and economic development supervisor.
Brian Burden, arts Eric supervisor.
And Jennifer Wingard should be here shortly. We'll notice her when she arrives. Are there any of? Already did roll call. Okay. I'll go ahead to the land acknowledgement. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors acknowledges the indigenous peoples of Alaska, whose land we reside on. The community of Girdwood, situated between the areas known to be Denina and Luptik homeland, respects the people who were stewards of this land for generations. We commit to the continued stewardship of this land and are grateful to be a part of a wider community that seeks to maintain a sustainable use of Girdwood Valley for present and future peoples. We just did the roll call. Are there any disclosures this evening?
Standard disclosure to me on item number 10, Girdwood Comprehensive Plan. I'm chair of Magic Girdwood, which is the petitioning comprehensive plan.
Number 10?
Yeah, sorry, number 11.
11, yes. 11, you will be recused to stay in line with all of the other accusations on your topic. I'm sure asking you questions as the participant. Any other disclosures? Okay. Announcements. The 2025 GBSA Budget Work Session 2 was today at 5:00 PM. The 2025 GBSA Budget Work Session 3 is TBD if needed. The Girdwood Valley Service Area Nonprofit Grant Presentations are Monday, September 30th at 7:00 PM. And our parliamentary procedure training is Tuesday, October 8th at 6:00 PM tentatively. And our GBOS Rules and Procedure Work Session is also TBA coming late September slash October. The public is encouraged to ask questions and provide comments. Please raise your hand and wait to be acknowledged. To help discussion stay productive, please direct your comments to the board rather than other members of the public and keep your comments focused on the business under discussion. Please be respectful of everyone's opinions. Tonight's agenda, I would entertain a motion to approve.
And you're too quick to let's turn it up.
Second, please. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. I'll go by assent on that. The agenda is approved as written. Now we'll go to the consent agenda, which is before us, the minutes approval of the four meetings we've recently had and a consider letter of non-objection case. We need a motion to consent the consent agenda?
Yeah, a move that we we accept the minutes and item number two.
Oh, you're moving to accept the minutes and poll number two?
Correct.
Or is there a second to approve the minutes on the consent agenda?
Second to approve the minutes.
Okay, I have read all of those and found them to be great and accurate. Any discussion on the next? We'll go by assent on that. The minutes are approved. Number two, Mike, would you bring this?
Yeah, just briefly. So when we do is when we have marijuana and alcohol licenses, we know roughly what we're expecting during the course of the year and we we basically just, we do discuss them when they come up, but we're ready to. We typically issue a letter of non-objection or occasionally a letter of support by default. So we do that unless there are complaints otherwise. There are a lot of, there are a lot of things that come through from the planning department to to the service area, to GBOS, to the community in general requesting comments. And often we just sign to them. So what we kind of, the proposal really for a change in process is that the issue of, we have basically established a template for a letter of non-objection. And we issue a letter of non-objection unless there's some other action that LUC or GBOS wants to, wants to initiate. So in that way, there is at least response from GBOS for every one of these, every one of these items. There are a couple of specific examples here, but both of these have already happened. So it's too late to perform any action on these, but these are examples of the sort of things that come through. The one on the screen, for example. So this is a more, a more active response to these rather than classically just let them drift by as if we don't have an opinion.
Thank you for explaining that, Mike. This makes sense. And the marijuana retail was on land uses agenda, so that was brought up as now they're every two years. Any questions on that item or a motion? Media motion?
I think in both the cases, both of these specific things, they've already happened. But in the future, what we will have is a, is when we receive the initial notification, there'll be something on the consent agenda to just say issue a no, a letter of non-objection, and we will just say yes, unless there's some specific reason to, John.
Okay. So we'll consider number two on the consent agenda complete. Okay. And Jennifer, welcome. Please state your name.
Jennifer Wingard.
Thank you. Then we'll move on to presentations and reports. The first one on our list is the resolution for Guy Wade, but I do not have it in front of me. Oh, it's in the packet. It is, of course. I will happily read this into the record. And my, or Guy is not able to call in tonight, but we will take time to acknowledge his service. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors hereby resolve to honor GBOS member Guy Wade. Whereas Guy Wade was appointed in fall 2021 and elected to service in GBOS seat C in the April 2022 GSA elections. And whereas during his tenure, Guy Wade has served contentedly at the liaisons for fire department, parks and recreation, and public safety and roads and utilities. And whereas during this service, critical issues took place and continued, which required significant time and attention, including the continued COVID-19 pandemic, which increased participation in all community meetings virtually. Longstanding discussion within municipality of Anchorage regarding the contract for services and appropriate funding for Girdwood Fire and Rescue EMS area-wide funding. Fall storm of 2021, when an atmospheric river produced flooding throughout Girdwood and washed out Ruon Road, a critical and vital access to essential municipal utilities. Proposed Holton Hills development, which motivated immense community involvement. Many additional meetings for months and extended time and intensive energy. Continued years of work, process and ultimate approval of the Girdwood Trails Plan. Recent final process and ultimate support of the Girdwood Comprehensive Area Plan. And whereas Guy led this community and board towards special sessions with the Alaska Humanities Forum to nurture equality and equity discussions within Girdwood. And whereas Guy has prioritized his time on GBOS by giving issues analytic and thoughtful approach, drawing on his past experience working in remote Alaska and in the lower 48, participating and volunteering locally while raising a family in Girdwood. And whereas Guy has maintained composure and professionalism throughout his tenure as both a reliable board member and an attentive individual, giving his time serving the community. And whereas Guy has additionally volunteered in other capacities through nonprofit boards, coaching youth sports and mentorship by maintaining recreation-based activity regularly. Therefore, be it resolved that the Girdwood Board of Supervisors thanks Guy Wade for his hard work, welcoming company and realistic approach to subjects in his years of service on the Girdwood Board of Supervisors, passed and approved by the Girdwood Board of Supervisors on this 19th day of August 2024. Someone like to move?
Move the, move the resolution?
Thank you. Do we have a second? Second by Brian. Any other comments or discussion?
Just a huge thank you to Guy.
Thank you. That will go by assent on that resolution and that is approved and thanking Guy for all of his service. We also have another resolution of gratitude. Yes.
Just do a range.
Thank you, everyone, for clapping. Thanks, Mike. The second resolution we have is for the Scott and Wesley Garrish library staff. Would anyone like to read this?
I'd be glad to.
Okay. Please do.
Is it in front of me?
It's in the next page in the packet and it's on the screen.
I write, Girdwood Board of Supervisors Resolution of Gratitude to Scott and Wesley Garrish Library Staff. Whereas the Scott and Wesley Garrish Library Staff went above and beyond on Saturday, July 20th, when the Seward Highway was closed due to a serious vehicle accident. Closed the highway from noon until after 6:30 PM, unexpectedly filling Girdwood's public parks, playgrounds, trails. And whereas contrary to any other sunny Saturday, an extraordinary number of visitors entered the Girdwood Library to find entertainment from the Garrish Library's computer, books, and children's toys, as well as enjoying the library lawn. And whereas a group of about 12 students and three caregivers arrived at the Garrish Library seeking available space to safely entertain the children during the afternoon pending highway reopening. And whereas Ambler Stifson, Garrish Library's quick-thinking employees suggested they use the Girdwood Community Room, set up a variety of activities, including puzzles, games, and a movie for the group, which kept the children entertained until library closing. Therefore, the Girdwood Board of Supervisors thanks the Garrish Library Staff for their extra accommodation, flexibility, creativity, welcome space, and impromptu active activities, which showcase one of Girdwood's best-loved and important public assets, the Scott and Wesley Garrish Library, passed and approved by the Girdwood Board of Supervisors on this 19th day of August 2024.
Thank you, Brian. I'll take that as the, the motion. It's seconded and thank you to the, I'll just contribute a comment. Thank you to the Scott and Wesley Garrish Library Staff. They did say they would be here tonight, but maybe they're not able to. Any other statements from the board? Comment? We'll go by assent on that if there are none and that resolution is passed, we can clap for them.
Yay.
Yay. We have a nice frame for them. We'll see them next, which will be tomorrow. She'll be open. Okay, next is number five, the legislative report is Kathy Geisel online or?
No.
Who else? Okay. Mayor's office?
No.
And then next is assembly members, Randy or Zach?
Randy, you offered his apologies. He wasn't able to make tonight.
And thank you. All right. Then next is our Anchorage School Liaison, who is now Carl Jacobs. And he is online. Welcome, Carl.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Men of Chair. Just a couple of quick announcements and would be happy to answer any questions. First and foremost, as everyone, I think, in the room knows, we are now proceeding to our first week of the 2024-2025 school year. So grateful to see our students back in our buildings. I unabashedly share that. School tours are the best part of my job and so I'm grateful to be back interacting with our staff who are doing some really important work, getting our students acclimated to the buildings and the series of adjustments that have been made for the start of this year. Those include adjustment to school start times. All programs, aside from some specific charter and special programs and pre-K, which starts on the 22nd, have begun and they are utilizing modified times, which align with the science that indicates adolescents perform better academically as well as receive mental and physical health benefits if they are allowed some additional sleep. And so the change was made after roughly 18-month deliberation to implement the start times effective this year. In addition, the, the board greenlit the sixth grade to middle school transition for the remainder of our community that wasn't already aligned with that. Certain middle schools in East Anchorage and Eagle River were participating and having sixth graders in our middle schools. So aligned that, which could bring about and should bring about more efficiency. And, and then lastly, implementing the Academies of Anchorage program, which will bring important core technological, technological education, as well as the freshman academy specifically, will offer consumer science, consumer family sciences benefit. So I'm excited about that class and our freshmen, the class of 2028 are the first to experience that. And so I'm eager to, to sit down in one of those classes as soon as possible and get to experience what our, our freshmen are, are learning in our high schools. With that said, the board is currently in the process of reviewing a proposal by AST administration to take a small portion of the funds, I believe it's roughly $5 million, that was allocated by the Alaska Legislature and inject that to the current fiscal year's budget, while reserving the remainder of that and the largest portion of the one-time funds that were approved by the Alaska Legislature via the FY '25 Alaska Operating Budget and keeping those in reserve for the 2025-2026 school year. As folks who have closely followed the legislative process will know, the legislature passed a bill which would have permanently increased the statutory funding formula for K-12 education that was vetoed by the governor and then in override to put that measure in law permanently failed by one vote. When that override came to the joint body for consideration. And so one-time funds of an equitable amount were appropriated. Unfortunately, that'll, that'll mean that education and the funding that provides for K-12, our K-12 system in Alaska will remain a topic of further debate once the legislature gavels back in in January. And so the board in the interim is reviewing to make sure we're responsibly using those funds as well as going to have a plan to continue advocating to inflation-proof the formula that provides the resources necessary to retain our educators and provide a quality learning environment for all students. The other item of note that the board is grappling with is district rightsizing. I believe at our work session tomorrow, which begins at 4 o'clock, we will have a proposal, kind of the first work session of the year related to potential avenues of consolidating the facility and the footprint that, facility space and the footprint that the district has in the municipality. Some more information there. That process won't be a quick one. It'll be months of discussion and community engagement. So I don't have anything more on that quite yet because I haven't seen the proposal and we haven't sat through the work session, but please know that more discussion on that is coming. And then lastly, just a, a quick policy change that I'm working on and I believe will pass potentially tomorrow. For anyone not familiar, I helped draft an amendment to our board policy to provide in a way of anonymous reporting harassment, bullying, and intimidation for students, staff, and family volunteers to take advantage of in the district. That is called Stop It. And that portal, which is also a phone app, has been available since the start of last year. With that said, there has been, some folks have indicated maybe a lack of awareness is one of the factors in preventing some of its utilization, although there were hundreds of reports submitted over the, the course of the last academic year. So one of the tweaks to the board policy that I proposed and I think will pass tomorrow will be a requirement that AST administration provide a notice to all AST families semiannually advising them of the ways that they can express a concern, whether it be through the Stop It app or a, or formal grievance process, contacting the school board, AST administration, or anything in between. So that formal notification process should be part of our standard operating procedure going forward. With that said, that's the bulk of the information I have to share at this point. I also wanted to, to make it clear that I'll be representing the, the GBOS area for this academic year. So please feel free to reach out if there's anything I can do in between meetings. And I also know that the Board of Supervisors has been provided meeting updates, kind of, kind of quasi-minutes or updates regarding our meetings. I'll make sure that those are sent to the Board of Supervisors as well, whether it be through the FCC or directly. Happy to answer any questions before I get out of your way. I want you to continue your meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your report. Are there any questions from the board? I don't see any and, any in the room or online. Okay. Thank you very much for joining us tonight. Okay, the next report is from HLBAC, Tim Sherman. Provide anything? Their meeting is on, he did provide something in the packet here and their next meeting is this Thursday at 1:30 PM.
Question for the chair. I have some comment on that. Would it be appropriate now or prefer later in the agenda?
If it's not on the agenda, the subject, and it's about this meeting, you could bring it up.
Okay, thank you. So at the, the upcoming HLB meeting, the two items on their agenda deal specifically with Girdwood. And the, the first item on their agenda is talking about the withdrawal of land from HLB inventory and transferring the management to Girdwood Parks and Rec. And this is completing quite a cycle for the Winter Creek Extension Trail. It, it has a unique history in Girdwood where the trail was originally part of the 1969 Nordic Trail that was built at Elyeska and it, it had a Forest Service easement that moved, that traversed Elyeska and then entered up just above Homestretch and, and out into the, out into the field. As the Elyeska Master Plan in 2008, 2009 was approved, it was, it was very clear that there was going to be development around where the easement existed. And so a, a negotiation was started with Forest Service and, and with Girdwood to reestablish the trail in a different alignment on, on lot, or excuse me, on, on that parcel. So the easement was vacated through quite a process. And Elyeska Resort basically built a new trail to a higher standard for the community. And then I believe that the, and then turned over the trail to HLB. And I think this is, and now the process is gone, is going to go full circle and we're going to end up with it in our inventory to manage. I think that, that the precedent that was set here and the process that was gone through is something that we can all keep in mind as we are moving forward in the valley with numerous development, putting pressure on our ability to access recreational land in Girdwood. And these sort of processes exist and they can create opportunities for the residents of Girdwood and for developers in, in Girdwood as we move, as we move forward as a community. And I plan to speak to HLB to make sure that they're aware of the history of this trail and, and its unique setting in, in South Central Alaska.
Thank you, Brian, for explaining the history to all of us. I don't think many people know that, that story. Any other comments on the HLB update? Okay, hearing and seeing none. Thank you, Tim, for submitting that. We'll go to number six. Does any supervisor have any items they'd like to share? None? I have one. It's regarding something that did start, but it does apply to the future and that's been posted, but it's the Solid Waste Services Girdwood Transfer Station has changed their days and hours of operation to include now Thursday. So the hours are 9:30 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, with half hour lunch, 12:30 to 1:00. So take advantage of the new schedule at the Girdwood Transfer Station. This is a trial period that the director of Solid Waste Service and staff are able to change. And if it does meet demand, hopefully they'll keep the schedule as this was meeting the pre-2022 hours. So thank you for that. Any, that was my update. So other updates? We'll go to number seven, committee updates to GBOS, three minutes each on items not on the agenda. Any community committees here to update anything that's different than these? Okay, I'm not seeing anything from in the room or online. So read the minutes if you have questions or contact those representatives. Next is status of proposed Girdwood developments. Mike, is there any update?
The table is the same as we presented last month. There haven't been any significant changes, but if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them or someone else can do so.
Thank you. I had no changes to one topic. That's fine. Number nine is our service provider reports for five. First up is Chief Weston with fire.
Okay, great. I had a slide.
Is it in the packet too? It's in the packet as well. Yeah.
It is. Oops.
For the people.
Um, maybe I forget to shrink a little bit. There we go. Um, so on trend, June, we had a super busy July with 47 calls. Our normal call volume for the last couple of years has been about 30, 31 calls a month. We had 47 in July. And they're up there. And then in August, so far, we've gone back to our normal sort of call volume. So we had 13 so far as of Friday. We now have both refurbished medic units back, so that means they have new chassis. The old box, but it's sort of spruced up with a new paint job. So we're excited about that. Those are gas medic units. So we're waiting for the municipality to put in the fuel tanks that were approved under an area-wide bond a couple of years ago. We hosted an AT&amp;T FirstNet trial in our parking lot on August 8th. We're participating in the Anchorage International Airport Mass Casualty Exercise on Wednesday. We had a busy July, but obviously it wasn't due to forest fair. So forest fair was just sort of regular days for us. So it was all due to actually tourism and I think just busy summer season. So. And then also the tsunami brochures, the final brochure came out. The draft file brochure came out on Friday, which reviewed it, which shows Girdwood importage in the evacuation zones. And so that should be hopefully out within the next couple of months. And then we have a new member, Open House. We had one last Wednesday. We're going to have one this Wednesday for anyone who would like to join the fire department and it's 6:30 to 8 at the fire station. Any questions on the report?
Question for Chief Weston? Online or in the room? Don't see any. Thank you.
Sorry, can I just, I do want to say this is, having this visual like this.
Yeah.
It was, it's more just hard to know what to put on there and what not to leave out. So, yeah. But thank you.
Yeah. And recognizing it's halfway through the month when it was written.
So it's kind of like a snapshot of where August is going. So, yeah. And notice in July, we did have a cat in the tree, which we were unable to get out of. There it is. Yeah.
Yeah, you all seen a special photo.
Not successful. It was still in the tree when we left. So.
Thank you. Okay, next is Chief Ashay with police. Welcome.
Hi, we're Whittier Police Department, Girdwood contract. Basically with our stats for Girdwood, predominantly most of our activities have been traffic calls, traffic stops, things of that nature. We did have one accident for a minor shutdown down Alaska Highway where a car climbed RV. No serious injury and it was, the highway looked pretty quick, like thank. Girdwood Fire Department also came out to assist with the happenings around and assist with traffic as well. Other than that, another thing I wanted to do today was introduce one of our newer officers. We have two new officers. The man over there is Officer Lloyd Willis. He recently started in the summer with us. He comes to Whittier Police Department with just over 16 years of service, mostly down South Florida, Georgia. And I believe he's happy to be in Alaska, a little bit different. He started with the Whittier Police Department earlier this summer. So he's off-field training and has been a great job. Currently his rotation is overnighting in the Girdwood Service Zone or night shift, both in Whittier and Girdwood. Next to him is Officer Tim Sampson. Tim has been with Whittier Police Department this shy of four years now. He had roughly seven years of experience all in Alaska. Both officers, they're true, they're assassins over here, but they're community Girdwood as well. There are a couple of things we've done, or do, we do annual training. One of the things that Tim just recently committed, was his annual taser refresher course that was at Palmer. We plan on doing, we do it every year, is basically a reality-based training for judgment, call it, police officers on how to have a certain situation. The judgment means that for many working, talking to individuals, to have to use compliance techniques. The judgment means that for many working, talking to individuals, to have to use uh compliance techniques as well as different levels of work. We're planning on some ongoing training this fall. Uh, we'll give you guys a brief one. Uh, if anyone has any questions, I'm more than happy to answer. Uh, the next meeting I'm gonna try to bring Officer Adams, Brad Adams, who just started. Uh, Officer Mark Hager's last day was Sunday of uh Forest Fair. Brad started that following Monday. Um, Brad has completed field training and he has approximately three years of experience all in Alaska time. Uh, hopefully he'll be here during rotation for the next G B O S meeting, and I'll do a quick intro with him as well. Again, if anyone has any questions, I'm open.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Can we do that? A question for you, sir. Um, we're expecting a significant uptick in commercial traffic on the Elyeska Highway. And is that in your sights for the next month or so?
Yes, if uh whenever we have any type of uh Blueberry Festival or any type of festivals, we keep that mind track. We usually station an extra officer in the area. Uh, most times, most of our rotations run two officers for a twenty-four hour shift. In other words, one day shift, one evening shift. Uh, in areas where we have pre-planned events, we'll throw out a third officer to mix or cover ship to have on both shifts.
Thank you, sir.
No problem.
Thank you, Chief Ashay, for coming tonight and introducing us to Officer Willis and Officer Sampson. Nice to see you again, and thank you for your service here in Winter Creek.
Thank you.
Okay, next is Kyle with Roads, Parks and Rec.
Uh, yes, uh, so we'll start with parks. Um, always some, a lot going on. Uh, our great seasonal guys, John and Luke, have been uh tackling projects. Uh, one large project is out in the Beaver Pond. Uh, we started installing some turpike uh tread maintenance out there in some of our muddiest holes, and we're seeing great success with the sort of new formula and and uh uh working out there. So we appreciate those guys out there trudging away in the mud. Um, we just purchased a new Conex for the uh baseball field uh through uh funds raised for the bowl fund. Um, and uh it is sitting over there and we'll be getting that in its spot here over the coming days with the new foundation uh out there. So the guys are working away on that. And as always, we're pushing away on the Winter Creek Bridge. Uh, and construction docks are underway and calculations. Um, and we will be meeting this week in the field to go look at laydown areas and staging areas for next year for the contractor. Um, and you know, our big focus is it's gonna be helicopter operated based. So we need to work at uh designing a bridge that can work well with uh helicopters that are available here in the valley like A-Stars and Bells. So so we're working through that here over the coming months. Um, as always, we're just keeping up on many different projects and uh using the summer to our advantage to um do the maintenance and improve the parks as we move forward. So if anybody has anything that's happening out there, any any issues you see, please bring it to Margaret. I has attention. Um, as always, we're waiting on grants. Uh, we're still working through with the state on our uh recreational uh trails program grant in the land water conservation grant for the new uh pavilion over in uh uh Lions Club Park. So um we're working to get them the details they need and just waiting on them for approval process because it pulls the state level and the Fed level. So it takes uh quite a bit of file. Um, but yeah, so we're working through quite a bit of different things and getting ready for grant fall season. Uh, lots of grants come out in the fall, so we are planning for grants for next year. As always, Margaret does a great job of keeping our social media and website up to date. Um, switching over to roads, uh, we are uh doing a ton of projects right now. As you may have seen, we're moving around uh many different areas of town doing drainage work. Um, we have Western available during this period, so they're uh they'll be back at it tomorrow working on uh the Timberline side of the subdivision or the the subdivision over there. Um, and we're gonna do as much as we can. We're really uh limited on what projects we can do this year because we had a big winter, so our funding is tight, so we'll be uh working through getting projects done. Um, and the major uh projects is that we do have the bid in and we're finali- finalizing the contract for the uh Elyeska uh Fish Culvert at Davos. Um, and so I shared with this last month, but I just keep it in here. Uh, Caliber Construction was the winning bid. Um, and with the project management and uh support, uh that project will be close to about eight hundred and seventy thousand um to get done. Uh, and so we'll see if we can come in underneath that. We hopefully can find ways to have cost savings while we once we get into construction. Uh, the key thing we're trying to figure out now is if that project will happen this fall or we'll have to delay it to next spring. It really is getting this contract completed and then seeing, once the contract's completed, then the contractor will has the authority to go buy the pipe. And then how long does it take for this fish, special fish pipe to come in? So we'll uh we'll see how that goes um over the coming weeks here. Otherwise, we are, like I said, we're working through many projects and trying to move forward. Our budgets are right where they need to be. Um, Roads uh is at fifty-seven percent spent. Um, we'll spend quite a bit this month uh doing uh standard summer maintenance. And then Parks, same thing, at fifty-seven percent spent. Uh, Police at forty-nine percent spent. Uh, we have a couple invoices that still need to be paid, but we're right on pace where the budget is for there. And then Fire uh currently at uh fifty-three percent spent. Um, and there's another lump sum going to the Fire Department uh for their fourth quarter. Um, and then we'll have I G Cs and all the other expenses. So so we're right where we need to be at this point in time um with our budgets. So um that's pretty much just the quick overrun. The report's much more detailed, so we recommend you read that as well. I open any questions?
Any questions from the board in the room or online for Kyle? Thank you, Kyle and Margaret, for the reports.
Sure.
Okay. Or reading to you. Thank you. Next is public comment. Persons offering public comment must state their full name and address. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person and must be on subjects not listed on the agenda. You're in the room for public comment. Come a little bit more forward. And then uh then we'll go online after.
So, good evening. I'm Kai Holland. I live at one four zero two zero Stover Place, Anchorage, Alaska. Um, I'm running for the House District line seat that's open, and so I primarily just want to say hi. I've uh was born and grew up in Anchorage, and I've been involved for the last forty years um in industrial product management and manufacturing, but also I spent most of those forty years doing a lot of work in the community. So I've done community councils, neighborhood associations, wildfire projects. It's kind of a current passion of mine. And uh I've had a great time uh getting to know more of the current issues in Girdwood and appreciate uh the uh support I've gotten. We had a great event here in the community halls a week and a half ago or so, so enjoyed being able to use the space and appreciate the support we got to be able to do a community event. Um, other than that, I just want to leave for today and remind everyone tomorrow is primary day. I hope everyone will come out and vote. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, online we have Crystal. Go ahead.
Uh, good evening, everybody. Uh, Crystal Hope, uh, just wanted to give an update in regards to the childcare project. Um, I think it was discussed last month that we did clear our lot. And um so that's super exciting to see it, something happening on the ground. Um, and then as of today slash tomorrow, um, our I T B, so invitation to bid, it has gone out um for our utility connection and our um building site pad. So if everything goes according to plan before the snow falls, we will have um a pad to build on for our foundation to be poured in in May. So um exciting things happening, and if anybody is interested in um the I T B, you can email girdwoodinc nine nine five eight seven at gmail dot com, and I can forward you the I T B. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comment? Okay, we'll move to our business of the evening. Number ten, it's consider applicants for G B O S C C to recommend to Mayor France for appointment. And as many know, the C is vacant, and we had three applications turned in by the two deadline. Um, one on the screen is Grace Green.
And uh scroll down.
And we have Kelly Okeneck and Sean Marks were the three applicants that submitted resumes. And if they made a statement, it was sent to the Board of Supervisors emails. Uh, we haven't done this that often, so that's fortunate and unfortunate. But the process we could do is if you're in the room or online, if you'd like to introduce yourself, we could do that in order. Um, comments from anyone else? Okay, no comment.
I agree. I'd like to hear from, like to hear from the candidates and perhaps ask you a question or two.
Great. So Grace Green, if you're here, uh, please come closer to the microphone and then we'll be able to meet you.
Um, good evening, everyone. To co-chair Sullivan and Edgington, thank you, and to the Board of Supervisors as well. Uh, my name is Grace Green. I um submitted my resume to be considered for the open seat C. Um, a little bit about me, I've been a Girdwood resident for about ten years now. Um, let's see, my um background is a lot of different things. My first job I ever had was in the Marine Corps. So I attended the United States Naval Academy, and then I served in the Marine Corps as a helicopter pilot and aircraft commander. I served three tours in Iraq in support of Operation Iraqi Freedom and uh was very honored to serve my country. Um, after my uh obligations to the Marine Corps were over, you can thank my husband here, Stu, who uh came up to Alaska and climbed Denali, and he said, we have to move to Alaska, and I said, I'm all in. So uh we uh truly love being here in Alaska. Uh, I've done a lot of different things. Uh, I think kind of coming from my background in the service, my real passion is doing things that make a difference and give back to our communities. Uh, a large part of my um civilian career was leading Tote Maritime Alaska here in Alaska. Uh, really very much enjoyed that, and now I serve as the Chief Executive Officer for Life Med Alaska. Life Med Alaska is Alaska's uh largest and only Alaskan-owned uh air and ground medical transport service. So uh I've had the pleasure of getting to be really familiar with emergency management systems, with how our state works and 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 being a part of a team of first responders who really are truly amazing and wonderful people. Um, Girdwood is a really special place. You guys know that. And so when I saw that C C was open, I thought I would throw my hat in the ring to be considered, to contribute to our community and um uh happy to answer any questions that you guys have. Really thank you for the time.
Thank you. Go ahead. If anyone has any questions.
First of all, thank you so much. It's a, it's a, we've gotten a abundance of riches. Uh, often we have zero or one applicant. Excellent. Um, yeah, I just just give you opportunity. What do you think is the um sort of biggest challenge we face that's been in the, within the role of G B O S?
Um, I would say it seems like there is a lot of interest in how we manage sustainable and um development. You know, our community has a lot of things going on. There was a big list that we just saw earlier of development projects and things like that. And I think it's the balance of how do we preserve this beautiful valley, but also champion, you know, responsible development and and things like that. And I would imagine as a Board of Supervisors, that's something that is definitely on the shoulders of the Board of Supervisors. Um, you know, having the responsibility also of like listening to the community and and everything else and and helping, I think, to use good judgment to make those decisions. Um, you know, we also rely on economic development at the same time to support things and important projects. And, you know, I I love our Girdwood School. My kids have gone to Girdwood School, and we kind of balance that right now, too. And and that's important. I I am really proud of our fire and police that we have here to help protect and support our community as well. Uh, I think those are some of the big things, and then roads, too. I feel like roads are always a big, important thing. And, you know, how are we um using the connections and the network and the process that we have to, you know, support some of that infrastructure development for the community as well?
Uh, yeah, I'm Kuzin. I've actually been a Girdwood resident for ten years, and um I I didn't, I guess I haven't seen you much around. Can you tell me if you have been involved in any um particular uh organizations or committees here in Perth?
Mm-hmm. Uh, for a number of years, I was uh one of the chairs of Girdwood twenty twenty. So Girdwood twenty twenty now, I think it's the Girdwood Alliance, was a big economic development kind of organization here in Girdwood. So I was very active in that uh and fundraising as well. My kids are big skiers, and so we were really active in and still are with the ski club here in town. Um, and then just otherwise, just being involved in the school and local activities and, you know, um, with some of the lion last, was it last year? I've got to phone a friend back here. The lion duck race and things like that. So yes, definitely. Yeah, thank you.
Right, yeah, Brian.
Good question. First of all, again, like Mike said, thank you very much for applying. I am, I am impressed with um with what you bring to the table significantly. I'm, I am concerned about your, how you will be able to represent Girdwood as we are talking about developments that are bringing a lot of real estate online for um for Girdwood and and for here. Um, I I believe that 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 is part of your life here in Girdwood also. And how will you manage that um that interest in your life?
Well, I think it's hard not to have some conflict in interest uh as a member of the board. And so I think uh and I think one of the other responsibilities is that we make ethical decisions. So I think if anything were to come up or there would be a conflict for whatever reason, you just have to be very upfront and recuse yourself in those decisions. Um, the good news is, is that this guy over here handles most of those real estate issues. I I obviously have another job that's my primary focus outside of this as well. But I would hope that um that my decision-making would reflect in the ethicalness, if you will, of of recusing if if for some reason those things came up. Also, another good perspective as well for a lot of those issues.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I related a whole.
Yeah.
Uh, since you mentioned it on your resume, I looked at the the website for your reading statistics. It looks to me like um like it's uh broad-based and includes S T R management as well. Was I reading that correctly?
That's correct.
Okay, excellent. Excellent. Thanks. Um, perfect. That's, it's just so much a topic of conversation that puts you right in the thick of it. So, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
No, Mike?
There was a question I was gonna ask everybody, which is um, I I know it's early days and you haven't had the fun experience of sitting this side of the uh the table yet. But do you think you'd be interested in running for the uh position in April?
Absolutely. I think being involved in um a political capacity of some nature, I think, has always been really interesting to me. I think no better place to start that than right here at home. So, yes.
Any other question? Any hands in online or in the room? Thank you so much, Grace Green, for coming and and your incredible resume and answering all our questions.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Next, we have Kelly Okeneck. She wrote a statement that we all received online. Is she on the phone, Kyle?
I think so.
Well, we could take a moment to read it. If if anyone hasn't read it, you could leave it on the screen or um. Okay. And then the next one is Mark, Sean Marks, that uh submitted his a couple of weeks back. So many of us have received that one. Is he on the phone? Or in the room? Okay, nice turn. If Sean Marks is online, you could unmute. I don't get stuff.
We can see her.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you. Uh, any motions from the board?
I've just got a, I've got a question. So I'll, I guess I'll raise as a motion. So I'll explain my thinking and then phrase it's a motion, but I'm not sure if I'm gonna vote for it or not. Um, it would be really good to hear from all candidates, and uh certainly one out of three here. Um, I'm considering whether we should um reschedule a meeting for to sort of hear from to. But at the same time, we've said we're probably gonna act on it tonight, so I'm not sure if I'm, why it got to the point. I'm gonna propose it's a motion, but I understand if nobody wants to second or second it.
The motion is, oh, Kyle?
I'll just to clarify, we did contact everybody and let them know.
Thank you.
Discuss. Perfect.
Thank you.
So I withdraw that motion.
Okay. There's no motion on the floor right now. So check for.
I would say that there, there could have been some confusion about this because according to our rules and procedure, we discuss this in executive session. So it might not have been clear to them that it would be spoken. So it's in uh fill in vacancy. It says under item number seven, G B O D B O S will meet in executive session to make a recommendation to the mayor. So if people were familiar with that, it's unclear that people would have been talking about it. So if people were familiar with that, it's unclear that people would have been talking about it.
Thank you for that procedural point. Mike?
Yeah, thanks for that. The, I had noticed that, but we actually typically can't be in executive session unless we meet one of it, unless we have a specific reason. And while we could potentially have that reason, we're discussing candidates, we would have to sort of make the case in a specific instance. So that's an example, one of the examples where our rules and procedures are probably a little out of date. But I agree, it could cause confusion. So in that case, I'm going to put my, I'm going to put my proposal back. I'm going to make another, the same way.
Okay.
I'm going to pass it around. So I'll make a motion that we postpone to the stage where all candidates can be available.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a, I don't, I can repeat it, but do we have a second for that motion?
Second, bud.
Okay, Brian, seconded. Any discussion?
Question for Kyle and Margaret, perhaps. What, what sort of communication went to the candidates about this evening?
I think we just informed that they was going to be discussed tonight. They submitted their resumes and that the board would be discussing it tonight. They'd make appointment.
And was there, and follow-up then? Is, is there, was there anything suggesting that they'd be here tonight?
No, I mean, I don't think so.
I guess I would ask Grace, did you sound, did it sound like you were invited to attend?
I would just say that, being that it was on the agenda, I thought it would be important to be here.
And we know it's under oath, Miss. And the due date was before that.
We do, but I also knew the rules and procedures. And so I communicated to one of the people that I understood this to be under executive session. I think I disagree with the interpretation that, that we're not going to go along with that because it's pretty clear. So one option would be to move this to the, to the end of the meeting, to the, to our actual vote if we do end up voting tonight, and then go into executive session at that point so that we don't have to interrupt the flow of the meeting. But I do have concerns about not following what's pretty clear. Like, that's a very affirmative statement. So, and moreover, our rules about going into executive session also make it clear that we can choose to do that in a public meeting. So and it's listed under the things that we're allowed to do in executive session. So I feel like it's repeatedly stated pretty clearly that we have a certain process.
Thank you.
And I think, it's funny how forward-thinking this was. I don't know if we've ever had three candidates for a position. But I think that there's a benefit to us not thinking about this.
Any other comments? Action?
Yeah, I mean, what is this? I think there's somebody in the.
I'm a motion. I said, and for a moment, I think it's fabulous we have three candidates. Amazing, so just super good. All my candidates, super fabulous. So just wanted to say shout out for that, so.
Yes, and I'll just, my only comment would be, you could make an amendment to move the item, but that might be a separate motion after that. So roll call vote would be to.
To keep.
Yes.
I think the, whether we can or can't go through an executive session process is kind of probably not the most important thing right now. What is important, I think, is that there is not clarity. I don't think it was clearly stated, we expected people to be here. And I don't think it's clearly, we were that clear on it. We're not clear on exactly what the process is when there are multiple candidates. So I think that kind of reinforces the suggestion for postponing and then setting up its specific meeting for this purpose as soon as we can. The last thing I've mentioned is the timing. When I look back at the last time we did an appointment, it was about six to eight weeks, I think, from when we did the appointment till the person could be seated. So it's a, there's some delay still ahead of us. So I don't think it would be too critical. But equally, we don't want to wait much longer.
Mike, do you want to restate your motion really?
I can't remember. Yeah, so basically postpone this item until we can have a special meeting and explicitly invite the candidates to that special meeting.
And then I think it's a question for staff on like, whether, whether or not it's conceivably an option that we can get a meeting in the next week or two, in the week or two, because that's what we're proposing. So I just thought, let me just double check this.
I mean, we could find you midday, or we may find an evening spot that's open, but it would probably be most likely a midday. Things are so busy.
So, that would also be counting on our candidates. So we actually have, we actually have a seven member, a seven-person dual pool that we need to go out in if we're asking to hear from candidates. Correct?
Great, if you want the, if you require the candidates to be there, yes, then we'll have to coordinate all that.
I think what we would do is ascertain that there would be a quorum of DBOs. The rest, I mean, yes, we want them to come. But one of the elements of DBOs service is meetings.
Yeah. Don't say.
I mean, usually. So the important thing is that we have a quorum. You have lots of information on the individuals who have expressed interest. It's reasonable that people are not always able to make every meeting. But what we do need is a quorum of DBOs to make a decision. And making the decision is the element that needs to happen in order to kick things along or getting somebody on board.
And you do have on your agenda tonight, if you did want to go into executive session, you could at the end of the meeting and make a decision. Otherwise, you can, we can now find you a meeting somewhere down the road. Go back to the subject.
Thank you for reminding us that. It is optional at the end. And with any poll we take, we need a quorum. And if someone cannot make it, they can write a statement saying they have something with their statement. Like with the P S A. Anything else from the board?
So after we vote on this motion, will we be voting on holding a executive session following this meeting?
If someone makes a motion, perhaps, I think we'd still be on the item number 10.
Just to clarify, the motion would be, is to move this item to a special meeting. So it would be voted on.
Thank you, that's true.
Just procedurally, you could also move it to be discussed in executive session and then decide in your executive session whether you wanted to move forward or whether you wanted to speak to all the candidates or decide based on the information. That might be an easier way to solve it. Mike?
Thank you. Should we proceed with what's in front of us? We ready for a roll call? Okay, Kyle?
Was there a second on the motion?
Yes, there was a second.
I did second.
Okay, okay, we'll call it. Jennifer Sullivan?
Yes.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Brian Burnett?
No.
Jennifer Wingard? Motion fails.
Next, then, we are on number 11.
Okay. It's still item 10.
I don't think we are.
We're still on 10.
We, we still have to make the decision that we are voting on tonight in executive session. I mean, I think, I think that that's kind of what we have to do. But just to clarify, is that a decision we need to make? Or is that our definition of the rules and procedure?
If we, sorry.
Go ahead.
We can't just use the rules and procedures. We also have to use the other laws we're subject to, which we mentioned at the beginning, like the Open Meetings Act. For the Open Meetings Act, we have to have one of a specific set of reasons why we go to executive session. And we have to clearly state what those specific reasons are. We can't just go to executive session because we feel like it. So we would have to go through that process. And it may be that we don't have a good reason to go to executive session. So what I would do is, what I'm going to do is make a motion that we, we take a vote now on the, on who we appoint. And again, we could, this is a motion to move to a vote.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
Okay, so I'm going, I'm basically going to say we should, we should move to a vote now when we go to a point. So I'm moving that we go straight to a vote on who we appoint, who we recommend for appointment to the position.
Without going to executive session?
Exactly, yes, just that's it, yeah.
The next decision. So we have a motion to make a vote for an appointment tonight. Do we have a second?
Actually, what the motion is specifically saying is not that we're voting tonight, but we are not, specifically that we are not going to abide by our rules. We have not got an executive session.
Because the.
The motion needs to be stated.
Yeah, I can restate the motion if that's helpful.
Yeah, we could, you could restate.
Or we can write it. It is a second point. So yeah, so the motion then is that, because the, we have to follow the Open Meetings Act, which is not, does not exactly match what our rules and procedures say. So to combine that, to avoid that particular problem, I'm moving that we move straight to a vote on an appointment now. It's basically a request to move to a vote.
Okay, we have a motion to request to move to a vote. We have a second? Okay, I don't hear a second, so the motion dies. And then it, another move on this item.
So I want that at the end of the meeting that we go into, sorry, into an executive session and basing this not only on rules and procedures specifically for this appointment, but also under allowable reasons for executive session under our rules and procedures. So this is not for appointment, but specifically under Article 3, Meetings, it says, the following matters that are discussed in executive session and any other that may influence the reputation or character of a person, including personnel matters. So, but we use the personnel matters. And so I believe executive session is warranted. And that is the motion I make.
Do we have a second for that motion?
I will second that motion.
Okay, the motion's seconded. And is there any discussion?
Yeah. The, I hear, I hear the arguments, personnel matters. This is actually an appointment that's elected to elected position in the municipality. So it doesn't fall under personnel, personnel issue. Again, I think if there's, if there's any material people think we're going to bring out, which is predatory to someone's reputation, which I think is the actual criteria we need to follow, then that should be clearly stated when we do move to executive session. And at that point, also, the person under discussion has the right to allow that, you know, that allow that to occur in public and not in executive session. So we just need to go through these steps to abide by the Open Meetings Act.
Thank you. And I'm not reading. I know we've all read those in our, in different times, but I do recall the, the points about the person's character and if, and that has to be the reason that we're going into an executive session.
Sorry, just point aware since it's been stated sometimes. It specifically says personnel matters. And so number one, and then number two, again, our bylaws state. So I'm just going to buy what, what we have said, having the need is. So I'm a little uncomfortable with us adjusting this on the fly, especially because I don't recall this having been brought up so far in any of the changes we're going to make to our rules and procedures. I know we have rules and procedure issues. I haven't called any discussion about this particular one. So I'm a little surprised to have it all of a sudden here tonight. My assumption would be we go with what we've got. And what we've got on the page is abundantly clear. It says, "Within seven days of the closing date for resumes, we will meet in executive session to make a recommendation to be forwarded to the mayor." So I don't know any other way to interpret that.
Okay, thank you. Brian?
And I would like to also emphasize that we are making a recommendation to the mayor to do so.
Any other comments on this? Some motions?
Yeah, just, again, we have to, whatever our rules and procedures state, the law of the municipal code and the law of the state controls this. So we just have to abide by the, by the Open Meetings Act. That's all I'm saying. And choosing to go into executive session because our rules and procedures say we can is not good enough. We need to actually go through a process of justifying why. And we can do that. I'm not saying we don't do that, I'm just saying we have to go through those steps. It's a thing that there's a lot of sensitivity about going into private sessions. And we just have to be really clear about why we're doing it and have to have a specific and articulatable and legal reason for doing so. So as long as we go through that process, that's fine.
I have a question for you, Mike. So would that process happen at the end of this meeting?
If we choose to, and what we can do is just choose to postpone this at the end, and just to rearrange the order of the meeting and then have this discussion again when it'd be more convenient to go into.
Anyone like to amend the motion to discuss that?
I'm afraid I've lost where we are. We have a motion for.
The motion, I think I know a motion, but.
Simple. Okay, all right. Yeah, that amendment is to.
Okay, the amendment has made to move this motion to the end of the meeting discussion. So, ready?
Yeah. Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Brian Burnett?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0.
Okay, thanks, everyone, for working through that.
It's not always this far.
We're exhausted.
Now we're right for number 11.
Who's bringing cupcakes?
This is the item that.
Number nine, accused for.
Who's from, and it.
It's the audience.
Thank you, Mike. This item might be more of an update of where we are. Anyone want to take this item?
I'll give it a try.
Okay, great, Brian, thank you.
I've been able to be involved in it for quite some time. I want to draw everybody's attention to the July 19 memo from the Magen-Girdwood staff. And I, I think that Mike and his team have done a great job of summarizing where we are in the process. We have reviewed this document at least three times now since, since it has come out at, at our various meetings. And I think where we are right now is that you and I have been tasked with replying and putting forward a comment from the Girdwood Board of Supervisors to go to the Anchorage Assembly as they're considering this in October.
Correct, it's now an October work session with, I wrote it in something else, the public hearing on November 6.
Oh, is it? Okay, yeah.
Right now, that's the definitive plan. Are there any comments or questions from the board? And if there are any in the audience, our petitioner is in the room, or any questions online? So we had our joint meeting with Land Use last Monday on this topic only. We didn't have a quorum, so we didn't vote, but we also knew we had time now. So if anyone from the public has comments or any recommendations to tell DBOs members or Land Use representatives, please email your representatives. Anything else on this item?
And I would like to also further draw reference to the table that is in, is in the handout this evening. I find this, this is a real specific, really well-presented summary of the outstanding issues of the. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian, that was great. Okay, I think we have no questions or comments on that item, so we will go to number 12. That is the Girdwood Housing Implementation Plan. Consider allocation of funds. I'll start with that line, not the next line. Mike, and then Jennifer.
Okay. So I had an item, $50,000 in a project last year. And the intent was to. And the intent was to allocate that towards a housing action plan if we got far enough with the comprehensive plan. And we have got far enough with the comprehensive plan. So the intent of this item is to go one step beyond what comprehensive plan does, which is states some general goals and general policies, or not policies, but it states some division, goals, there's a few policies that have come from a while back. And then also state one of the things that we need is National Implementation Plan. And then, you know, basically use a, use the money we have available, put in this budget, to implement and start working on that implementation plan. Now, what we've heard many, many, many times from, from other bodies, we heard this from planning zoning when the comprehensive plan came in front of them is, you know, it's great to go, but actually means concerns, but they don't have a specific actionable set of implementations, actual plan ahead of us. And we don't, we don't, we have, something gets there or starts that process through the com-plan, which is, as we know, not quite adopted. But we haven't done that next step of, you know, there's a whole set of policies, there's a whole set of techniques and solutions that we've tried in other communities. We haven't gone far enough down that path to say what priority should be, how they're actually practically implemented here. And in order to do that, while we as individuals, as elected members of the body and as volunteers can do that, we actually need professional help to do it. We need professional helpers to get credibility that this is a, this would be a solid execution plan. We need the credibility both from other elected bodies, we need the credibility from potential funding sources, from grantors, et cetera, et cetera. So what the intent of this motion tonight, or the intent of this item tonight is to agree as a body to, to pull out a, either an RFP or a contract, depending which path works better, to create a housing implementation plan for Girdwood, taking into account both what we've done so far in the comprehensive plan, use the information that we gathered in the comprehensive plan, and go forward and have an implementation plan for it. And there's, did it make it in the packet?
I'm looking. I'm sorry. I thought that I had recompiled it, but it might have dropped out.
It did. It will, it will be in the packet, I think, for GHGC. But there was some, one of the examples that has been discussed a few times is, say Sandpoint, Whitefish, Montana. Had a, an update to their housing implementation plan, the housing action plan that came out last year. And several of us looked at that and thought it was a great piece of work. They actually, one of the authors of that was somebody who's worked with us on the Girdwood Comprehensive Plan. So again, it's a, it's a kind of an, sort of, sort of thing we would possibly get from this exercise. So at the Housing Development Committee, there was a summary, basically, contents that plan presented. Nicely done. I actually, that's what we have on the screen. So this is kind of a sense of what it would be, but tonight we're not actually, we're just approving the process of putting together a RFP or a contract, or a starting setup contract for this exercise. Not actually approving, we're basically allocating the money towards that, that we already have in our budget. We're not actually making the final decision of doing it. We still have to get a quote back, et cetera. I did ask Shanna Zespian from Agnew Beck to join us. Shanna was leading a group that did the economic analysis and the conditions analysis for the comprehensive plan. And also works with the, I think, were you actually, Shanna, were you directly involved in the Whitefish?
I was not, but, but yeah, Shanna was, yep.
So I just wanted to see if you could just say something generally about, you know, without, if there's an RFP, you obviously can't be part of the process of putting together the RFP that you might bid on. But just in very general terms, what would a, what would a housing action plan, housing implementation plan do for us? How would it be beneficial? And how much work have we effectively already done, given the material in the comprehensive plan?
Sure, thank you, Mike. Hi, everybody, I'm Shanna Zespian. I'm with Agnew Beck Consulting, calling in from my house in Anchorage. And like Mike said, we worked on the kind of housing and economic analysis to support your comprehensive plan. And then originally, we, we kind of got involved with the goals and objectives and that a lot of folks had worked on and helped kind of think through some of the wording there and the intent. And I'm looking at your screen, I know you have the needs assessment and strategic planning. You know, I think, I think you're actually fairly far along in terms of needs assessment. And, you know, the last round of housing analysis that we did, we were able to even estimate housing need by different income groups. I mean, there's always more information that could be brought to bear and, but having a targeted number to, to work towards is, is already in that document. And so I think, as Mike said, it's that action planning step that's, that's needed next, where, you know, I think, I think it probably is important for you all to put on paper a scope of work and, you know, whatever your procurement rules require in terms of putting out to bid, but putting on, on paper kind of the, the different things that you would like to see come out of that process. But from working with you all, I imagine it's a bit of bringing, you know, key stakeholders together to almost identify the specific actions that follow from that comprehensive plan, goals and objectives, and even allocate the who behind each of those, and maybe a little bit about the timeframe. So, you know, I know some examples were thinking about dark homes and community-based property management organizations. So maybe there is something about, you know, what kind of nonprofit group might need to be formed to, to put that in place. I know there was talk about incentives for housing at different price points, so a little, it's, it's not quite a feasibility study, right? You're not going to do all of the work in the action planning, but you're going to kind of outline some of those steps and who's going to be responsible. And you may find there's different types of organizations that need to be created, like a nonprofit. I don't know, I'm just throwing out examples that, that folks would want to come together and have, you know, okay, in year one, we can work as a coalition, and year two, maybe we need to form a nonprofit. But it's really kind of putting that, that to-do list together collectively for the community to move forward with housing. And then I think just, you know, again, I think, you know, Mike pointed out the Whitefish study. We've done quite a bit of action planning in housing in resort communities. But, you know, it would probably be good to bring in a little bit of case study research on some of the latest and greatest policies that have been implemented. And so that would also be something I think it would be good for you all to, you know, kind of identify which communities and, and just, you know, make sure that, that we're, you know, that we're bringing in the latest information.
Thank you. So, yeah, so the particular, the particular ask I have of the board tonight is that we, we allocate, so we have some money in our budget. We allocate that to producing a housing action plan or implementation plan. I don't know, I don't know which we, it's either hit or hat. And, and then we have to go through the process of getting this through procurement, which I think probably will be an RFP. Is that, I'm going to ask Kyle, just for advice. Do you think the RFP is the better path for us to pursue?
Yes.
Okay. So it would be, it would be put together, basically put together the work package for it, and then go through procurement, to put it out for bidding?
Thank you, Mike, thank you, Shanna, for coming tonight and discussing this a little bit. Any sort of board comments?
Question, what would you, what would you expect the timeline to be?
I don't know how long it's going to take to get through our purchasing process, but I would imagine from what a contract to completion is, you're six months, eight months, something like that. Now I'm going to ask Shanna. Is that an unrealistic expectation?
I think minimum six months. It really kind of depends on how fine-grained that the to-do list becomes, right? You know, so if there's additional research that you need done and back and forth on some of that, it could go a little bit longer, but bringing everybody together, I would say give yourself at least six months.
It would normally have said a year, but you already have so much of the needs assessments and at least initial allowances done. I think that speeds up significantly. The six months.
Yeah. Any, Jennifer, I meant to say your name.
No, no, that's, that's okay. I was going to ask some questions of GHGC, and so since we have a GHGC row, maybe we just let him go, see?
Okay, Matt?
I'll figure out if that answers.
So this all process will run through GHGC first?
Question?
Time.
Okay.
I didn't hear a question, sorry.
You said, will, will this go through GHGC?
I don't know what you mean, what do you mean?
Well, we were tasked, we've done quite a bit of this already. So how does Girdwood Highway Consulting combine with all the work that we've done with the financial team?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, that brings, that brings a bunch of data and a bunch of information to the table, but you're a, you, you, we, GBOS is only, are only one of the stakeholders. I mean, we have a role when it comes to the governmental part of it, but we're only one of the stakeholders. And you're obviously advising us, so we have part of that, a fairly important part. And we only have part of this, this, this piece. There are also nonprofit, nonprofit stakeholders, there are commercial stakeholders, there's the resort. Still, we lost a, oh, sorry. There are a bunch of other people involved in this process as well, so they would all be part of the, they would all be part of the effective fast forward. At least that's what I'm doing.
Now will it run for GHGC?
I'm sorry, I don't quite understand.
No, no, I mean, the process. How, how do you envision this working? Are you just going to take the ball with it? Or are you going to run it through GHGC and then have it vetted there? And then win again with the more material input? And then go through ultimately GPOS for a decision?
I think there's a misunderstanding about what the, what this is. This is not, we are funding, we would be funding a professional plan, which shows, which has steps, has the steps for implementation of solving the problems we have here. So GHGC is an obvious advisory to GBOS, you're absolutely part of this process. If you're saying is, does GHGC control it and veto it and decide what does, what questions can and can't be asked? Then no. And neither does GBOS. The idea is we put a plan, we put a scope together, and then it's done by a professional consultant who knows, who understands how this, understands how this has worked successfully in other communities as well. So what we need out of this is a, is a plan which is executable, implementable, and has a degree of credibility that it is, we have found hard to establish as a volunteer body. So it needs that kind of professional perspective.
So in response to whether we spend $5,000 or $50,000, I think the community should understand what the return on investment on that spend is and where the consultants would ultimately add value to the actual process. It's not telling us actually, we work within the process to actually help the people. So they just come and drop a document on us and leave. I can consider that to be worthy return on investment, and if the consulting firm is basically going to help shutter the community process, does that kind of make sense?
That's why I'm standing, I'll actually pass that question to Shanna, she's the expert on this. So can we, I'll try and rephrase it, but you may want to come to the microphone and phrase it better, so.
Shanna, could you hear that a little bit?
I think it sounded like there was comments around wanting, you know, support, kind of shepherding the process as opposed to writing a plan and just dropping it off.
Yes. That's a second question.
Okay, yeah, and I, I, you know, again, I think that's why it's really important for, for you all to put an RFP out and kind of identify what's important to you all. And I would imagine if, you know, if we submitted a proposal under an RFP, it would, you know, for sure be similar to how we've been helping with the comprehensive plan and having a facilitator in place. And, you know, a big part of this is really the process. I mean, the, the strategies, you have a lot already in your goals and objectives document, and the strategies aren't going to be, you know, that complicated. I mean, there are certain things that are going to be complicated when you actually do implementation, but it's, it's really important to get the right group of people together, you know, including businesses, including residents, and how, however it makes sense to organize this, this type of work. It could be similar to how you organized the comprehensive plan, or it could be slightly different. But I think, you know, that would be our intent is really a process-oriented action plan. Because it's, it would be really up to you, to you all and your different groups and the who you represent to be the, you know, folks with your names next to it, the implementation side of it. So we, we wouldn't be able to write that without you saying that's how you want to organize yourselves.
Thank you, Shanna.
Yeah.
Well, Kyle?
Crystal, I can, but I'll go, I just want to get my comment in here, a question I have for you, board.
Okay, I also saw their hands too, but-
Okay. Just from a staff perspective and coordinating something like this, I guess the question I have is who would build the RFP? If we put RFP out, who would be on the selection committee for the RFP? And I think that kind of may relate to what Matt's input is here is, would, who would be the collaborators to build this? Select the firm and then eventually manage that firm through it. You know, from a staff perspective, we would probably just imagine financials of it, but we'd be looking for, this is really a grassroots thing that's happening as to who's involved with that. So just starting with the basics, moving up, I think is give clarification for our perspective as this does move forward.
So I think that's, that's what we as a body probably have to decide. I think it's, it's reasonable to have an RFP committee. So we both have to put together an RFP committee, which typically isn't done formally. And, and then when it's issued, it becomes a public document. And then we have a, we'll have a group of people who, who are the selection committee, which may not be the same people that's put the RFP together. So I think we as GBOS, we're going to fund it. So I think it's reasonable for us to put together a committee of people who are going to create the RFP and then also a selection committee, probably with your advice on selection committee. And then as it goes forward, it's, it'll be a public process.
Okay, I'm going to go to Chief Weston.
I just want to say, I think everything's going to fit together nicely when you get there. Because you have a gap analysis, you do a gap analysis of what you've already done, right? And where you want to go. And that can be put in the scope of work where there are everything, right? Of saying where you want to go. And if there's ideas that have already been fleshed out that you want more information on, then the consultant can go there and have, did that, did that apply well? Or did that plan not actually work in the community? Because sometimes these plans happen and they don't. They work in the opposite, in terms of housing. So I think it's all, the importance here needs to be not focused on what's going to be what, but on the scope of the document for the RFP, right? And I think that having an actual housing action plan that gives performance measures and says, if we can do this by this time at this time is good. And then I think six months is an unrealistic expectation to get some through the planning, through the usable purchasing losses, and then out there finished, if you want to call it that, with community possibility.
I need to clarify, is it six months after the wonderful contract?
Okay, Crystal?
Um, I just, I thought that when it came to the $50,000 that Girdwood Housing and Economic has in that, in that fund, you know, I, I had supported the $39,000 study for the RV park, but didn't support it until after Girdwood had control of that land. And the reason why I was like, well, yeah, I'd support a housing, you know, implementation plan is because I was under the impression that we could spend it by the end of this year. So now what I'm hearing is, is that, would it be spent before December? Because kind of that was why I chose to pivot on where I thought that those funds could be spent. And also, I, I don't know, are, are we looking to vote tonight on, on permission to spend? Because I would think that this conversation should be more than just a presentation at GHAC, if that's the case. Thanks.
Kyle?
So the money- So the money, we would move into the capital account and then reserve it like we did for the Trails Plan as part of the, so it'd become a, it basically, it's a capital purchase for the community.
So, sorry, can I, I think what Crystal was asking is, does that mean it has to be spent this year or if?
It goes in capital fund, it'll sit there until we finish the project.
Okay, thank you. Um, Matt, did you have your hand again? Or sorry, Jennifer?
I did, I did my hand up, um, but I'll, so I'll make two quick comments and then, um, so the first is, is that we don't need an RFP to meet, we have GHGC taking the decision. Uh, the second thing used in relation to the $50,000 is that money, you know, just for people in the room. That, that money that's in the budget was just kind of, but as a placeholder for GHGC without GHGC actually being a consultant. So we have actually gone forth and done proposals, um, including requesting funding on certain things. With the potential that that $50,000 could be used for that. That's a consulting, that we use for it, that was not the. Um, and then the last thing that I just, I wanna say is I think Brett can't raise his hand on the thing. So, uh, Brett, if you can hear me.
Oh, are you saying, has his hand up?
So he's gonna get his hand up on the team's.
Okay, thank you. Jennifer, would you like to go next? Your hand was up before.
Uh, yeah, Brett, if I, if I can just jump in and then, um, it's good, because I've had my hand up a bit too. Um, I, uh, I think what I'm hearing is, is some confusion around the process here. And unfortunately, this is something that keeps coming up and maybe we are gonna have to formalize this to those procedures. We have a clear historic precedent on this board and within the Gerwood Democratic, just kind of the way democracy runs in our town, that we run things through committees. We set people up with good faith to be, uh, to, to be experts or to, to be put on the committee. The way we did the Urban Housing and Economic Committee was just not, whoever wanted to show up, we specifically hand selected people. Uh, I think it's, it's important to understand to anyone who's listening to this conversation that this, um, request, uh, did not get fully vetted and voted on by Urban Housing and Economic. And I think it, I think it has a long merit and it needs to be, but right now we're, we are G boss. We are, we are acting as if this is an evacuation. What Matt has already referred to is that there are other calls on this funds, on these funds. It's, it's not in vacuum. There might be things we can action right now whether or not we have the official, uh, permission from some action plan or not. Like I think GHGC is really wanting to move on things and get some things done. And so, uh, this is essentially, there's a perspective that this could be a stalled part. But more importantly, there's a perspective that this is skipping over our democratic process. Because once again, and this is the second or third time we've done this, just this year, this January, you guys, we are skipping over the committee. And I understand we think of ourselves, it's a big red and powder. And I understand that we think of, like, we're in charge of the, uh, fund, so this is our decisions to make. But I have seen no precedence in all my years of watching the urban politics, where we skip over Gerwood Trails to say, oh, never mind Trails, whatever your idea is about how to spend money, we're not gonna do that, we're gonna do this, cause we came up with it all by ourselves. Uh, and that is essentially what we are doing to GHGC. And it has caused tensions already and now we're doing it again. And I feel like this is disrespectful to our volunteers in the community. You might, we might not see it that way, we might see, and again, there could be, could be countless spectacular reasons why this is a perfect thing to do right now here today. But we didn't run it through GHGC. And if, if it's that clear cut, then it should be voted on by GHGC. And then Matt's absolutely right, because I did this, I'm really, we're gonna come up with that, yeah, another committee? Like, now we're gonna have an RFP committee? We have people who have been working for months on this and dedicated so many hours, my eyes crossed. I think I did a lot of hours on G boss, but what some of the members of GHGC are doing dwarf that. So I feel like we need to respect that. So that's my case.
Okay, um, Mike, your hand was up?
Yeah, so, um, it was a year ago when, uh, on September last year, uh, when this item was put into our proposal for the 2024 budget. And it has been discussed many, many times since. This item has been on GHGC's agenda. Um, this specific item has been on GHGC's agenda. They discussed it at the last meeting. Um, I'm comfortable if we, uh, if we, uh, if we get a, a formal vote from the advisory committee as well. I think that's completely reasonable. Um, I'm also comfortable if we start going ahead and decide how we're going to, uh, move forward with this. So I'm just gonna propose that we, uh, we move to a vote. I, I'll make a formal motion and, uh, now, which is, uh, we. I'm deciding, I'm waiting.
Mike, can you speak up?
Sure. Absolutely, I was, um, so what I'm gonna propose is that till we make a formal motion now to, uh, to put together an RFP, um, which then will go through the purchasing and procurement process, uh, for a consultant to create a Gerwood Housing Implementation Plan. Um, and we allocate the, uh, the funding we've already reserved in 2024, or the funds available in 2024.
You have a motion? Do we have a second? We don't have a second yet? And if we don't have a second, then we don't have a motion. So, um, further discussion on this, I didn't read the second part, yes?
Brett's gonna read it.
Yes, he is. I, I went to the board because they have, thank you. I didn't forget. Totally. Uh, anything else from the board for a moment? Okay, Brett, unmute.
Uh, thank you, thank you. I just felt compelled to comment on this. Um, and I think the most striking summary in it is that the scope has changed in this meeting. So to put some context to it, it, uh, it was brought to GHGC, uh, to go to a consultant uh, for a housing implementation plan. In our last GHGC meeting, we came back and have the document in front of us that we're working over, uh, probably take another meeting to review. And this is a great, uh, and thank you, Agnew Beck, who does great work, I might add. Uh, this was patterned after the Whitefish, Montana efforts that Agnew Beck was involved in. So this is a framework for the housing implementation study. And the consultant rightly noted that most of this legwork is done. But what the committee has not had a chance to do yet is compare, uh, our actions against the implementation plan. And it sounds like, uh, even in this meeting, the consultant rightfully identified that that would be the next logical step. So I think that the root of all of this work is in the committee level. And this is where it gets difficult, uh, uh, to go through the detail at the level here at G boss without vetting it properly at the committee level. And so, texturally, this work is being done. I don't know if it's being presented in its entirety to G boss. And so hopefully, we can review the actions that we've taken so far, some items on the agenda this evening, as they relate to this plan. And I think it's been well identified that in order to move forward, it would take a reworking, what actions need to be done. But we would be in error if we did not look at the actions that we've already taken. So this does need to go back to GHGC, uh, since the scoping has changed since we've seen it. And now they, but what I did notice is that the budget amount, uh, that is being proposed to be spent has not changed. And I would just propose that, uh, we really get a good handle on scoping before we put a dollar amount to it, uh, especially since the scope's just changing, uh, within this meeting. So those are my comments from the perspective of the Housing and Economic Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Brett, and I have a question for you. Uh, it sounds like it, but would you feel comfortable with one more GHGC meeting for this item to go here on this, our GBOS agenda again?
Uh, it would take at least that. And we'd have to have some, uh, a- again, further committee work. And I, I think a good and honest review of the things that we're doing against this implementation plan. And procedurally, the next thing our body needs to do is accept this plan. Um, initially, the proposal was to hire a consultant to write this plan. Um, but now that we have a plan that the body's considering, hopefully we'll have something that we can work from. And I would hope that within a meeting or two, we can do a full review of the actions that we're taking. And I think that it was identified properly that the next logical step is following an action plan. Once we review what we've done, I would say one to two meetings, uh, to where we can see our action deficiencies and places where we would need help in defining an action plan. And that's where I think we might be able to be really focused in a scope of work, uh, in order to bring in the proper experts.
Thanks, Brett. Mike?
I, I'm confused by a couple of things I've just stated. Um, in particular, it does sound like the scope changed significantly in the last, uh, by the last speaker, who appears to be saying that, uh, GHGC has already created an action plan, it's just a question of action on it, which doesn't make any sense. We do not have an action plan. We don't have a set of.
Implementation, point of order, point of order. It's an implementation plan. It's just a, it's.
Brett, Brett, we can't hear, we can't hear both of you, so.
Um, so the, so what we're looking for here, what we need as a community is a, a justifiable, executable plan, action plan or implementation plan. I don't think they really matter with what we call it, um, which is supported by professional work. Um, and we can stand behind and has this degree of credibility that rightly or wrongly, we are not getting as a set of volunteers. We are not getting that credibility. Um, we need that credibility to be successful. So, um, I appreciate the work that GHGC is doing. I know what it's like to spend literally thousands of hours in this problem. I have, um, many thousands of hours. Um, so it's a hard thing to solve. It's not something we can honestly do very well ourselves as volunteers. Um, it is not something we can do without professional help. It is not something we can do and get credibility without professional help. That is the thing that is missing. And we keep hearing this time after time after time. When you listen to the assembly or you listen to, um, you know, even other, other community groups, when you listen to the planning and zoning, they're all asking for the same thing, which is basically a credible, actionable plan. That's what this is. This is what we will be putting together through this activity. And that's what we need. And it is not gonna come from us as GBOS. It is not gonna come from GHGC. It just is not. We need professional help to bring, build something which is credible if we want to be successful. Um, and I think, I hope that that is everyone's goal, to have something which is successful and has the credibility to bring funding forward, which is the next, you know, the phases after this. We'll need to bring funding forwards, eat that degree of credibility. And that's what the, uh, the goal of the, of the Housing Action Plan is.
Thank you, Mike.
Uh, to, to ask, I'm just gonna propose that we postpone this next meeting. I think this, I, I would like to hear, um, more feedback from GHGC for our next meeting. So I'm just gonna propose we postpone this to, uh, September meeting.
Okay, is the board agree, agreeable to postponing to the next meeting? And Brian?
Um, I think I could be agreeable to postponing to the next meeting, but I, I wanna say I agree with many of the, many of the points that Mike makes here. And one of the points that, that he might not be making is the timeliness of this report also is, is something that I think that, um, in this community, we tend to, um, we have a lot of tolerance for, um, working a long time on, on the products that we put out, uh, and the great products we put out. But I think timeliness is something we all need to be considering these days.
Thank you, Brian. Kyle?
Good. Just speaking from experience here, you know, um, we went through as Trails Committee and created the Gerwood Trails Management Plan. It took us years, uh, but it was a very thorough document. Um, but I knew coming out of that, that we could never do a Trails Plan through a committee process, um, even though we kinda did. But we knew that we had to bring in a professional to help guide along. Um, and what was successful was that the supervisor at the time of Trails, the representative from the Board of Supervisors, worked with the Trails Committee to create an RFP. Then we put that out on the street and then we hired a professional huddle who came in and then guided through the whole community through that process. So it's something to think about, a process that has worked and successfully, we've come out with something in the end. Um, it took quite a bit of time to get through it because it was such a community written process. Um, but we did finally get to a final document. So those are ways that we've done it in the past.
Thank you. Uh, Jennifer?
And, uh, the point well taken, just one, one clarification about that though is Group Trails Committee has whoever on it who chose, um, chooses to be on it. And so what we had, once and when I was, I was part of that, I developed this role over a hundred people. So that was considerably different thing than the committee, you know, GHGC, but.
Correct.
I can.
I have a, a question for this, though, um, I'm still confused. I actually genuinely am confused about how this could, how this works. Because, um, what I keep hearing is that the RFP has got, is not a public document until it is released as a request for proposals. So how do we, how do we actually create an RFP in a public process when the document itself should not be a public document until it's released as an RFP?
Well, that's your, that's your conundrum, is you're a public body that wants to do RFP. So you have to go through a public process in order to do it.
Well, that's not the.
Unless you assign it to a department to, you give them guidelines and the department creates the RFP.
But I think that's the way you could do it.
But if you, if you want, if you want the public committees to be involved, it's a public process.
I agree. That's, that's the thing I'm struggling.
And when we did the RFP for Trails, it was a public process.
And there was no problem.
Yeah, I mean, eventually people are gonna see it. I mean, if you're, the thing you probably won't do in committee is talk about how much you wanna assign for dollar amounts to each thing. But you definitely have principles and action items that you wanna create out of this RFP process. And I think that can be done through a committee process.
Would it be possible to get, um, to reach out to the purchasing department? Just get their advice on how that's done as a public process? I think that would be, that would be helpful, just if they have any guidance on that.
And what are you looking for guidance?
What I'm, what I'm asking is, because again, because my understanding is, um, the RFP itself is not meant to be, is meant to not be released publicly until it's issued. Um, how do we go about creating that through a public process? That isn't typically how it's done. When a department is generating, as you say, it's, it's privileged information, it's like policy, it's like policy, policy work until the RFP is ready and then it's released.
Well, there's one way to do it is you work with, if you, if like, for example, Mike is, is the, as the representative to GHC, you go back to GHC and say, okay, let's create three people and we come up with the RFP. Problem is that you won't have the support of GBOS or LUC or, uh, the Housing Committee before you put it on the street. So whatever you create, everybody's gonna see at the same time. And if that's, if, it, it, that, that's a hard buy-in for people. They're not seeing what's gonna be put on the street.
That, that's why I'm asking, is there, is there, um?
As a public body, this, this is the way.
Is the purchasing department able to?
Purchase department, well, whatever comes to them, they're gonna put it on the street. They're not gonna guide what your process is. But once it gets to them, they're gonna guide the process about how it's selected.
Understand, but they're, they're also the ones that are saying that this document isn't a public document until it's, uh, it's just an RFP. So that's why I'm wondering if they.
Unless we go through a public process.
Okay, Mike, got it, got it. Now I see the, now I see the culture, the, uh.
I remember Shannon saying a coalition or a nonprofit also.
Will be later stage.
Oh, later stages, okay. Uh, Chief Weston again?
No, I was just gonna say, it sounds like you need to just remind on transparency, uh, a code of repeat process that isn't vocal to the public in terms of scoring criteria and the dollar value assigned to these.
It's essentially why the area plan went from a public body to a non-public body.
But I think the, sorry, Ken.
Again?
Yeah, I'll say a brief thing. I think actually the, the point that Chief Weston made is a great point about the, um, the, the development of the RFP can be a public process. And then the, the very last step of assigning weights can be a, a non-public process through executive session, given that, um, for this case, the executive session is about the financial side of things. So there is a way you could, we could do that still through a public process, but not have that very last scoring part. Okay, thank you. And I'm more comfortable, Mike.
All right, I'd like to move on from this item, since everyone maybe had their hand up, has already spoken. And, uh, we'll talk about that next month in this body.
There was actually a motion to move to.
I didn't know that was a, we needed to vote, but.
You don't have to.
It looked like consent. Anyway. I'll say that that item is going by consent for next meeting. Number 13 is discuss levies in Gerwood. I don't wanna speak too soon, but I think this was for next month?
No, I have an update.
You have an update, then great.
Yes, at least on the California Creek, uh.
Yes, okay.
Sorry, get back to the.
So that it says California Creek Levy Protecting Town Center. That would be the first item.
So I met with, um, So I met with Watershed Management and the Director of Operation and Maintenance and the HLB Director, Briggs. And we walked the site, we did initial survey. And they do recognize that it is something that needs to be repaired, so we're meeting with them this week to figure out possible funding sources. The one problem is it's not tied to any road system, it's on school property land. So service area money couldn't be used for it. So we're going to identify some other source to get in there, but we do have active erosion back there. And it is of concern, so we're trying to move something to get done this fall. And we did have Fishing Game with us as well, we do something in the fall. Their support of, of getting it done.
Thank you Kyle, any questions for Kyle? Amanda, you have a question?
My question, I'm going to say thank you. That's phenomenal, thank you.
If it's eroding away, it gets actioned.
If you come a little closer, anyone online can hear you just as well.
Yeah, so that's fabulous news, because that's obviously the first I've heard of that. I do, did notice that on HLB's. Meeting agenda for this Thursday, that again, they've negated to put the levy on the meeting notice. And I've, and they're also trying to do that land disposal of the industrial park. Which, you know, HLB is non-compliant with municipal code Title 2540.025C. I've repeated this to you guys a million times at this point. It states that land use has to get done. We need, we need the support of this board. To hold HLB compliant, that needs to be done. Any land disposal in this community has a direct and immediate impact on that levy. And until, one, the levy's fixed, but two, it's still going to be a continuous degradation of that levy until the trussel's fixed, you know what I mean? So all land disposals, HLB needs to put it on their meetings. And it needs to be publicly discussed. And they can't just keep ignoring me and not responding. Anyway, so that would be nice, we could just get some support.
You, the next item on here is the Glacier Creek, California Creek Turnigan Arm Levy Protecting Old Girdwood. Any update on that one? From anyone in the room?
We are waiting.
Okay. All right, thank you for your work on that, everyone.
Right.
I'll go to the next item unless there's anything else. Thank you Kyle, two. Number fourteen, review and discuss GBOS rules and procedures edits, I think that's just updated where we are. Number fourteen. I could just add that it was suggested we wait till we have our additional seat to go into the. Actual meeting about the edits, but that will hold for probably and. Not sure when that will. Comment. Adding to that?
The longer we consult on the changes we get.
That's good, that's good.
Well, maybe someone will submit a suggestion, an additional one after today. Okay, anything on number fourteen, then I'll go to fifteen. Request for Chugatch Electric to unground the power lines in Town Square.
I'll speak to this. So as we heard last time, there's a, there are some problems in Town Square, and sorry, we have a. We should probably just have a quick discussion about it.
Yeah.
Oh, and yes, you probably are caught. I was listening.
Yeah, I should, should probably make a point of.
Disclosure.
This issue impacts my, my household.
Okay, so Brian might want to just recuse, or sorry, disclosing, might have a conflict of interest in number fifteen. So if you'd like to be recused, I won't discourage you from. Joining, so.
Yes, point of order, last time we had this discussion, I think the ruling of the chair was that this does not raise to a significant conflict of interest. And I would be happy to support that position going forward.
Okay, I, I remember this now, so I didn't, I'm just jumping in when you were saying, would you like to be recused, or would you like us to decide?
I would like us as a party to decide.
Great. My ruling at that meeting was that we were not making any formal decisions. And that you did not have a significant or substantive conflict. And I am comfortable with that, but we didn't go through the list of questions. And I could do that now, so we might keep talking about this item. Unless the board wants to vote, we could also vote. If we feel that Brian can discuss this item.
Point of order, if you, if you could make a ruling one way or the other. It would, and then we can vote to support that or to.
Right, okay, my, the ruling of the chair for number fifteen is that Brian Burnett may participate. Anyone can object. I have that. All right, jump in.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, it said everyone has, everyone has, it's a small community, so we will have many, many irons in the fire. Yeah, so as we heard last time, there's a number of particular issues in, in the Town Square, particularly the eastern side of Hightower. Where the positioning of the. Power lines actually goes outside, the lines themselves go outside of the easement. And because of Chugatch's requirement that you have clearance, at least ten feet clearance from the lines themselves. It results in this conflicting requirement that our land use code says you can't have setbacks to the building more than, I think. Twenty-something feet, and yet. Chugatch, because they've built outside the easement, requires setback of twenty-three feet or, I can't remember the exact numbers, but they require a greater setback. That our code says is allowed, so it's inherently contradictory. And Chugatch also say in their, in their, both the code, both the code in the municipality, I think should be undergrounded. And Chugatch's guidelines to what they consider, they both say that town centers. And areas of sort of economic activity like town, town centers. Should be areas where undergrounding is prioritized. So everything basically is pointing to. That if Chugatch follow their own rules, they should actually be considering that areas somewhere to underground. So I think we can go about this one of two ways, we can either write a letter just requesting it, or we can go down the path of a. Resolution, and then supplement that with a letter. To, to make a request that they prioritize and put into their five-year plan. The undergrounding of power lines along Hightower in the Town Square area. So I would propose we, we, a letter. Rather than resolution, but I'm comfortable if the board decides to do a resolution instead. I do not have a resolution ready. But we can definitely have that for our next meeting.
Good, thank you Mike for working on this and Ellen for bringing up two meetings ago. And from those, quite a few meetings, it seemed like, I think she went to land use as well. I feel very comfortable writing whichever the board would like to write, resolution and or letter. Jennifer?
I think you can kind of, I think that was a motion.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so motion is, we've, we've wrote a message.
Right. Second.
Second motion?
And then I wanted to say, I kind of lent one, or idea for the idea of starting a dialogue.
Yep.
Rather than doing a resolution, but if we get no more with it, then that's the resolution, so on the table.
Okay.
I'd like to amend my resolution, my motion, sorry, to say Jennifer and I probably been the best parties to pull this letter to.
Okay, we have a motion with the amendment.
I'm not sure the second.
A letter, a letter to write with the suggestion of the teammate Jennifer. Okay, any further discussion on that? Brian?
Yeah, there's, there are certainly several options available to get, whether they go right down Hightower. Or whether they bury it along the back property line also. There's, there are options that, that would, that they could choose. Without having to tear up all the sidewalks and everything else, so. It, it could, it could end up being a lot easier than, than what it looks like.
So that Chugatch is currently burying a line behind between Davos and Alie Skahaya. I think it's second block down.
Yep.
And they're actually drilling underneath, and putting in a, putting in a conduit under, under the ground without disturbing much of the surface.
Okay, we'll go by ascent on that, are there any objections, last motion? Okay, look forward to a letter. Thank you for work on this. Number sixteen, GHGC requests for LUC and GBOS to consider support for service area STR regulation. Registration and regulation. Brett, are you speaking to this?
Yes, I can. So on our last meeting, we went over the basic framework for this and decided as a body that. We were going to come back with what would be an implementation plan and how we would accomplish that registration. We did have Zach Larson attend and offered a few ideas, we did have some interaction with Planning Department. Answer a few questions as well, and so that is in process, hopefully in our next meeting, we will have a. Somewhat of a strategy and how to. How to implement this type of STR regulation in the service area.
Great, thank you. And it is in front of us, and go ahead. Do you have something else?
No, thank you.
Okay, yeah, I saw you muted, I mean, Matt?
No, I'm just going to continue to answer to people in the community if you have a question or if there's something you don't like, or if something you really like, to continue to let. GHGC know, or that nothing is effectively said, and so this was kind of, kind of agreement that was made amongst all members of GHGC. We've learned of the community, we can feedback, and it's, it's always appreciated.
Thank you Matt, Mike?
Did a couple of, at our earlier meeting on budget. I pulled up a quote we got a couple of years ago for a third party to provide a similar level of. Support for short-term rental regulation. And it included, I don't know, I might have to go back to my notes, it included a. Building a registration, or basically online registration process. Tracking the, tracking the listings that occur on short-term rentals. Tracking when rentals are actually happening, and doing at least the first part of the enforcement process. Which is just identifying potential violations, and they would then be passed on to. If, if there was action, the municipality itself to perform any forceful action. And when you run the numbers, so this, this quote's a couple of years ago, I tried to get a more up-to-date quote, but I haven't got it in time. When we run the numbers, if we assume there was, I think fifteen percent increase from the end of 2021 to now. And put in the, the number of short-term rentals we have today, then it comes out at, I think, a hundred and two dollars per listing. Which is interesting compared to the hundred dollars on your registration fee, so it's almost exactly what this process would pay for it. So in the budget meeting earlier. We proposed, we discussed, but we haven't yet voted on. Put making that part of our budget proposal, so having, basically taking the revenues from the registration fee, then using that to pay a third party. For the tracking process. Now, we're not going to vote on that till next month. That's just one model to do this, but it's if we get it into our budget, that at least it's a, it's a statement, we could always change it in the future. But it's a, it's a statement of where we intended to go. It's just interesting, it comes out almost exactly the cost proposal here. One other thing I was going to mention as well is. The, there are a couple of ways this can be implemented, one is through the business license process, another way is through Title 21. There has been a little bit of movement on the issues of short-term rentals within Title 21. And a question was posed recently about whether they are actually legal under Title 21. And I think there is more, there is definitely more questioning and investigation as to whether short-term rentals are actually a legal use or not. Under Title 21, so it may be we're in a position where there is kind of a requirement for the, for the municipality to act on this. Fairly quickly, not just in Girdwood, but in municipality-wide. So there are definitely, things are aligning nicely for action in the next couple of months, next three to four months, three to five months.
Okay, so is the board going to prefer to take action on this tonight, your old business? Feel comfortable with approving what's here so far? Or that's essentially what you're?
Personally, I'd like to see it just go a little bit further into exactly the way that Matt and Brett described.
Okay, so another, another update? I'm just looking at Matt because you're in the room. And you're nodding, so.
No, that's fine, one other thing, I just have a question, this as we go to the third of our event, or I, if we get to that point. Mike, is there, do you think that, let's say to the extent there are like two available vendors that they could basically do like a talking pony show? To the community, to basically, you know, and this is more, this is more process question. We're going on this path.
So this is about the procurement process, and what we'd actually do is put a, probably an RFQ out, or an invitation to be a number, I'm not sure which. But basically saying this is exactly what we want, because we know this is service, which people. It wouldn't be an RFQ, it would be, sorry, it wouldn't be an RFP, it's a proposal, it would actually be these are the services we want. And then we can get back a, you know, potentially, potentially there can be a presentation, but we can just say we need this, or take the lowest quote.
Jennifer?
Can I ask a question, Matt, is, is there something you need or want from, I understand like just general support, but. Like do you, do you need a formal vote for us, from us tonight?
That was not necessarily my expectation coming into the meeting tonight, but I think my expectation ultimately is, is that GBOS will support. GHGC's work on, done on this, and essentially what gets questioned ultimately. By his bottom of the proposal. That makes sense.
Okay, good Jennifer? Yeah, answer, okay, Chief Weston?
Maybe this is over down in the document, but what I would love to see if we reconsider a friendly amendment to this would be. An address posted, so when they call 911, they know where they actually are.
How could you scroll down?
Their, their information, how to store garbage safely, and, and where to dispose of garbage, because there's one. Short-term rental company that has a little information out there right now. And then how to call 911. With earthquake information and tsunami. That would be my, if I was going to do it today.
I'm just going to say the side of the arm.
Thank you, anything else on this item? Okay. For two. Number seventeen, GBOS Resolution to Request Extension of Water Means to Old Girdwood and Mine Roads to AWW Projects List.
I'll speak to this briefly and then I'm going to ask to push this back to September. So there is, we had a, kind of an initial meeting with, we'll go back a step further. Several years ago. AWU described a change, maybe they were going to do future funding of water projects. And then last year at the, and Jennifer was at, at the, at the Housing Summit in UAA. AWU gave a presentation for the changes they actually did improve. And basically there are, they used to do something where if they were going to extend service, extend a distribution main. From the day they started the work, or really from the state day they approved the work, everyone in that area had to start paying for it. And that was obviously, you know, that was a disincentive for many people. They've changed that process now, so if they can, if they get grant funding for the work, then what they do is, is basically. Fix the costs when they start the project. And then go away, do the project, and then at some point in the future, if people choose to connect to that water main. They can start paying the assessment then, if they choose not to connect, they don't pay anything. But it's there available if, if they choose to connect at some point in the future. So one of the, one of the things that's always been a resistance to extending the water service to the rest of the community. Is people don't want to start paying for something they're not going to use. And this new model means nobody will have to pay for something they don't use. You would only start paying if you choose to use it, or if new developments come in, they would be required to use it. So this is, we know that there's a problem with lack of water supply, there's occasional problems with people who have existing wells. There's definitely an issue with the water supply for the fire department. There's definitely an issue with the water supply for the fire department in Old Gerwood and mine roads. So because there is currently funding and for the next several years, there is additional funding available, which hasn't always been there in the past through, through federal action. I think it's the, I can't remember whether it's the Inflation Reduction Act or the Infrastructure Act, or one or the other, or maybe both are providing additional funding to these types of projects. A W U suggested now is a very good time to, if we want to extend water system, to make the request kind of now. So that's what's behind this. A W U are not, should be able to make our September meeting to answer some of the questions and explain this process. And in the meantime, I think they're going to put together some language that will be helpful to them when they go ahead and try and find grants. So what I'm going to suggest is we push this off to next month, but now is a good time to get either any initial feedback people want to provide or just make sure that everyone listening now is aware this, this request is coming. And if they, if they want to provide feedback and get involved in it, do so. And again, we'll, we'll push it to next month before we actually take any action. Well, that's my request.
Thank you, Mike, for briefing us on this and working on this. Any questions or comments? Yes, Jennifer?
I'm just curious about, I'm just curious about like the impetus for this or what started this or is, as a group of people better? Anyway, I'm curious about the impetus.
This has been, this has been something that's been discussed on and off for years. And because of the presentation, I understanding is the thing that resistance was always, nobody, people have water systems, they don't want to start paying extra for something they're not, they don't think they need, probably don't. You know, they're just, that's a, that's not a good experience for anybody. So because A W U clarified last year that that is no longer a requirement for grant-funded projects, it opened up the opportunity for us to, to sort of push forward this sort of long-term request that we've had for a long while for expanding water across the whole valley. So really, it's just, there's an opportunity now and a combination both of the way they change funding and there is money available for the next several years. And a lot of the high priority projects have already been funded. So we're in this space where the kind of project we have is actually probably has a decent chance of getting grant funding. So we have this window and we should probably use it. Thank you. So it's just an opportunity.
If I can?
Just gonna say that there will be a letter of support for this. Obviously, I will know greater water supply in Old Gerwood than having one of the busiest gas stations, incredible gas stations in the industry, which are only to protect the boiling water stop sign. Additionally, if you look at Old Gerwood and see the whole rise and not rise and whatever, you see all that stuff in there. I think that there's going to be a need to have a good water supply for Old Gerwood. Additionally, the mine roads, a number of our mines, our wells in the area have started, you know, at that point, it's been twenty seven years, but we'll have to start repairing our wells and that. And then also, when we have a system based on wells, when we have earthquakes, we have to prepare, you know, issues with the water. So I just want to encourage you to do this in the nineties. I wrote a grant, whatever it's in the land day, and we did get another millions of dollars for this exact project. A W W chose to make the water system up here, but not it, and didn't extend it down. But there is a precedent of that, and that project was successfully funded.
Thank you. Mike?
Sorry, I'd like to reach out to you after the meeting, get some more information on that previous, I guess, summary.
Yes. My biggest concern is that we have a water treatment plant in this community that's about thirty years of non-compliant. We're actually one of the worst non-compliant water treatments facilities in the entire state, which is pretty sad. So I completely support because I realize the public safety concern, having, I think it's Chief Weston, you say it's like fifty percent of the homes don't have, you know, fire protection in this community. However, how can we increase public utilities, you know, customers when the facility itself is failing? I mean, that needs to be a part of the question and it needs to be resolved, it needs to be brought compliant before it can service any members. Thank you. Mike?
Quick response. The, this is about the water supply system, not the wastewater.
No, it's definitely, I mean, where would the water come from?
No, the, the, the water treatment plant we have at the moment discharges into the, into the creek. The water that's going into the city is coming from wells further up valley, deeper wells further up valley. So this would be, this is purely the water supply. Almost all the housing in that area has main sewer, but not main toilet. So this is the water supply side of it.
There are a lot of people, there's a number of people that aren't.
There are, yeah.
That are not on anything.
Yes, there are. Right.
So not necessarily that they can fix this problem.
But I think, I think the sewer system is available except for the very back section.
It was available, but everybody at the time, it was only offered us to buy into it, so six thousand miles took the opportunity to take it up. Some people chose to do this, obviously. And then the heritage land day also was a voting member in how, how this values to be their tier assessments and that skews sometimes how things would go. So there's, there's that issue too. But again, if the idea is to convert a lot of multi-family development down to have a higher level or elsewhere, I will suggest to you that you need to have a better fire system to accommodate all of that. Old Gerwood gets the touch, not having a good fire system right now, or ways to protect you those other than boiling water stop to a fire.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone, for this. Sounds great for the feedback maybe you're looking for. Mike and Matt, real quick?
That's right. I wanted to respond to, I mean, by really mentioning this in terms of the border nature of, because there's the A W W grant that's for whole towns.
Sorry?
There's like the A W W grant for like whole towns. They have like part of that whole process, it's like.
That was a congressional grant, a specific one. This is, this didn't be coming from.
No, my specific, but you know what I'm saying is like, we have affordable housing being, we have little bears and you, you brought up like issues like three and four, you know, on top of the other issues where A W W you like grant. Because you, yeah, basically asking, hey, we need money to fund this stuff.
So the, the, the grant opportunities, the, the other items set up are from the, like the infrastructure, I can't remember what it's called, the I A, I A J A or something. There are federal programs that have basically extending water systems or building new water systems for communities, which is independent of the, the sort of, you know, the, the money that parachuted out of our congressional representation for Hilton Hills.
Right.
And is not connected to, I think the issue with little bears is an internet connection thing. This has got nothing to do with interconnection.
Right.
This is purely a, this is extending a distribution system, which is a different type of, from a different type of funding.
To me, to me, it's just another example. Yeah, but to me, you're just raising another example. Very useful.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry, I see. Yeah, I agree.
Okay, ready to move on to new business? Number eighteen, agenda item L U C two four zero eight dash zero four, L U C recommendation, G B O S resolution of support for exclusion of G B S A from the proposed three percent municipal sales tax. Bryce, are you here?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Awesome, yeah. So this resolution comes from, comes from L U C and kind of the purpose of it is to, you know, exclude the Gerwood Valley Service Area from the proposed three percent sales taxes, can be hitting the ballots here in April due to the really unique economic environment and condition of the valley. So I understand, you know, this is going through L U C and G boss at the same time and kind of the outcome goal of this is to have G boss write a letter of, basically, I guess, support to remove G B S A from the sales tax. And this really comes down to, you know, making sure that we don't disproportionately impact our working class here in the valley and additionally provide, I guess negatively and provide, provide S T R and second homeowners benefits in the valley, since most of it's going to be property tax reduction. So that's kind of the very overarching goal. The fact is that the three percent sales tax does not really benefit Gerwood in any way as it does in Anchorage. And so I think G boss needs to get ahead of this since it is very likely going to be on the ballot. I understand there were concerns from Mr. Edgington on the last meeting on if this would be on the ballot in April. And I did attend the last Project Anchorage meeting here in, on Friday, and they are, at least the Le France administration is pushing to ensure that this is on the ballot. So I'm going to leave it at that. It's a very complicated proposal. I'm happy to provide a introduction to members if there, or other community members on Project Anchorage and what that means. But that's the general thesis of it, and I understand it's a new business, so I kind of want to leave it at that for discussion, unless you guys have specific questions or I can jump into more introduction. Thank you.
Thank you, Bryce, for the concise intro. Any questions or comments from the board? Understanding you may or may not have heard it, not explained, sorry. Any questions in the room? Yes. Grace?
Thank you. I have two questions. One, just for my information, Bryce, does he represent the land use committee?
No, he is a member of the public bringing this forward, and he brought it to land use, which was last Monday, and some people attend that, so they heard it, but this is brand new to us today.
Understood. The second comment I would make is, it seems like there are a lot of data points in the letter that Bryce has presented and before, I think, an appropriate vote of support or not, I would want to just do some personal fact checking on some of these things. I think there's some, some very specific things in there that I would want to just double check before I would put a vote of support or against any of those things.
Thank you. William?
Yeah, I would just say that we look at this as an opportunity to directly reduce the operating costs for our assembly units that we're proposing in the future. So this would go towards a hundred and eighty units of reduced rent for Gerwood workforce. And then just a question, have we considered any projects to submit to this?
To us or to the?
To Gerwoodland Superowners.
No, would be my answer, speaking for the board. The, the project Anchorage has, is asking for projects from the public in their survey type platform. Anyone wants to speak to it, they can, but as a body, we haven't. Chief Weston?
So, so to go down that line of questioning, that, that line of thought process, if we don't participate, we probably wouldn't be able to get a Gerwood Project Anchorage or whatever it's called, project here, if we want that.
Right, uniform that it's currently.
Yeah. If we got any.
Jennifer?
Could, I just wanted to ask if you could clarify your statement about, does the resort have a position then on, on this proposal?
I mean, again, we just look at this and we heard about this opportunity. The way that it would work for multi-family product, like we're trying to develop over on track B over there, is that this directly impacts our operating costs of multi-family building, which would translate to reduced rents.
And just to clarify, you're speaking about staying, assuming that this does pass, that, that it would have benefits.
It would, yeah, it would be beneficial to, seeing it came out of workforce.
If this, sorry, if this proposed three percent sales tax.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Mike?
Yeah, I think, so it's the twenty percent property tax reduction that you're saying would be the benefit. Yeah, yeah. Because there are, there are, as I know you and I have discussed, there are other potential options for tax exemption. There's an extension of existing tax exemptions to Gerwood that in, if you're within a quarter mile of a public transit area, if you're a quarter mile of a public transit system, which everywhere pretty much in Gerwood is, there's property tax exemption for multi-family housing, which would actually take you to zero, not twenty percent off, hundred percent off. So there are many other options as well. It doesn't necessarily tie into this. So again, if, if there's interest in the community to do these sorts of things, then there's opportunities to, to both extend existing tax exemption or work on new tax exemption under the recent changes in the state law.
Bryce? Oh, he's leaving. Actually, maybe his hand was up, so that's why I called on him. Brian?
Let's see. Oh, my last name is coming back.
Okay.
Tried to push the wrong button.
Bryce, if you can hear us, I called on you in case you had something.
Yep. I apologize, I fat fingered the mute button with the hang up button. Happens sometimes, right? Um, so, yeah, so I kind of want to go through quickly. So Ms. Green, I would be happy to discuss with you privately or another venue, kind of the statistics and information that this is really pulled from. I think that's an important conversation and I'm glad you read the resolution that was submitted in the agenda packet, as I think it really does outline the points of why this is not beneficial to the valley. Mr. Wilhelm, something else to consider, you know, I understand how it might be an impact to some of the developments that the resort's currently working on. Another thing to bring up would be the fact that this would be in addition to the bed taxes already being, you know, sent to the city of Anchorage. Right? So at the last assembly work session on this, A E D C and the assembly both incurred that essentially the three percent sales tax would be in addition to the twelve percent bed tax. So that would increase prices and increase rates for visitors if this were to be passed as well, having more properties. You know, of course, in addition to other things regarding your development. So that's just an important note as well. You know, I think the other, you know, last comment that I kind of want to add regarding the project selection, the project selection, as many have, I'm sure, read regarding the project Anchorage proposal, is that one percent of it would go toward public projects in a bonded format to where the people must vote on it. And the other two percent would be in, would be a reduction of property taxes. The twenty percent estimate that Mr. Edgington brings up is specifically regarding a mill rate that is about sixteen to seventeen-ish and is really based on the downtown and the higher mill rates. So yes, our impact would be a little bit less. However, with that said, the projects that would be selected would be very unlikely to be based in Anchorage. We have a very unfortunate history with the municipality of Anchorage where projects and other things that are proposed in Anchorage, including voted projects such as the community center recently in the cemetery, both of which have, you know, failed at the city level. So I think that's important to know as a valley and as a community, that is very unlikely that a project would be built in Gerwood or the project would be included in the Gerwood Valley at all. So I think that's an important note to keep in mind that we would be paying for a one percent project essentially that goes directly to Anchorage and may not benefit the residents of Gerwood at all. So I think that's really how I want to end it, and I appreciate G boss's consideration. Look forward to discussing this at the next meeting as well as the next L U C meeting. Thank you.
Thanks, Bryce. Brian, did you have comments?
I have a, a, well, I have a question for, for Bryce, if I may. Bryce, I understand that this, the sales tax proposal is, is mandated to sunset in five years and be re-approved by the voters every five years in, through our municipal elections. That means that, does that mean that this also needs to be reconsidered every five years? And what happens when, when the, in five years from now?
Through the chair. Thank you, Mr. Burnett, for your comments. So basically, you know, A E D C has stated this is based on the Oklahoma City proposal of how they kind of did sales taxes starting in the nineties. And yes, it would have to be, to answer your direct question, yes, it would have to be re-voted upon by voters every five years. How they've done that in Oklahoma City is that new projects come up every five to ten years, give or take, and they go ahead and vote them out to city. The difference between Oklahoma City's proposal and Anchorage's proposal currently, or A E D C, is that ours is a reduction in property taxes in addition to the project. So Oklahoma City is a direct one cent per dollar, one percent tax for a specific bonded public project. It has to be voted upon every few years and the funding that is collected through those few years is put towards the project. Anchorage is a little bit different, where it would be a reduction in property taxes, which kind of, you know, alludes to Anchorage and municipality-wide, unique situation with our heavy property tax burden, if you would. So that's kind of their hypothesis and analysis of it. The interesting part is I was actually on that trip in Oklahoma City back when I used to work in municipality of Anchorage. So I'm well aware of exactly how that proposal worked out for Oklahoma City, and I just don't think that us being Gerwood, more than forty minutes away and geographically separated from municipality of Anchorage, would benefit us from a project basis. So that is one of the major contentions amongst others inside the sales tax that I believe that. So that is one of the major contentions amongst others inside the sales tax that I believe that I'm bringing up. And I'm hoping that LUC and G boss would support. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Anything else on this item? Hi.
Wanting to go one way or another, it's just, I just checked the deadline. If you want to submit any projects, 15th. Your next G boss meeting is the 16th. Just a suggestion that you want to get anything as a place or in there, anything.
Thank you. Well, um, real quick.
Just a question, yeah. Did the voters vote on the individual projects or is it packaged up and then the full on this voter?
In Oklahoma City or?
Here. For this proposal.
Mike?
Well, I mean, the thing underlying all of this is this is a suggestion, a proposal coming from AEDC. And what I heard, I also listened to the same meeting as Bryce said he listened to. What I hear is a huge amount of skepticism from the, from the assembly. And particularly skepticism, this is feasible in the timescale of being, being all the details being ironed out before the end of January and then voted on in April. And I also hear some skepticism that the assembly would accept a list provided by a public, by a private organization and just say yes without their own fingers on it. So I'm not, I'm not saying this won't happen. I just think the assumption that, you know, the proposal is what actually gets implemented is very risky. It's extremely unlikely that what's proposed is what goes in front of the voters, if it goes in front of the voters. And if it does go in front of the voters, I think it's more likely to be in 2026 and 2025. But we're asking a lot of these questions about what the proposal is, what actually happens and what actually gets, you know, put in front of the voters or discussed at the assembly is likely to be quite different in many ways. In particular, I think one of the, one of the concerns I've heard is the regressiveness of the, so again, Bryce made the point about this is not necessarily going to help, you know, lower income workers because, you know, a property tax reduction is great for landlords, but it doesn't necessarily result in any decrease in rents. You know, people, a landlord can accept that or they can, they can just not increase rents in the future. That's the hope. But there's no direct correlation to a reduction in costs for the property owner to a reduction in cost for people who are renting. So there are many, many reasons why there's a lot of skepticism on this particular proposal and some of the details. So I think we can ask lots of questions about what the proposal is, but what's actually going to get executed, if anything, is likely to be quite different in some important regards. So my personal feeling is this is a little premature, but I understand what the, I understand the impetus for it. And the other thing is, for those of us who do properties, it's worth looking at what 20% reduction in property tax actually means. It's significantly more than I, than I would be paying in sales tax. So if I was purely selfish and just cared about, cared about what it meant in terms of like pocketbook, I would be in support of the proposal.
And really quick, in my understanding, AEDC is expecting the assembly to change the proposal significantly. They are prepared for that. Okay, any final closing, Bryce? Hands up.
Yes, yes, thank you. No, I think, Mr. Edgington, you bring up a very fair point that, yes, there's skepticism on how this is actually going to be implemented and what it's going to look like in the municipality. So that's why I don't necessarily agree that it's premature because the fact is that the assembly, assuming they do move forward on this, the Girdwood Board Supervisors needs to be ahead of it. And us as a community can't sit back and idle behind and wait for the municipality of Anchorage to release information on what this project looks like, and then go through a two to three month meeting process on what it means for us. So I think it is important that we get premature and potentially that means changing it to if it does get proposed, then let's go ahead and send this, you know, potentially if it does get passed, let's go ahead and send our resolution to separate us from that sales tax. I think that's a very important point to make that this could very well happen. And the fact is that we need to be prepared for it as a community. And that's why this is coming up to us now, because if we don't act on it here soon by the end of the year, then it's going to be voted on for the ballot in January. And at that point, it is going to be on the ballot in April. So that's an important point to make. So I appreciate the time, supervisors, and thank you to the community as well for considering it. And please check out the resolution for more information.
Thanks, Bryce, for your work on this and coming to the meetings. We'll go on to number 19, the GHCC request for a TBA amount for grant writing for an EPA community change grant application funding for gravel extraction in Glacier Creek. Brett?
Oh, thank you for that. So we have a GHCC. If you recall earlier, we had come forward with potentially looking at gravel extraction via feasibility study. That was quite expensive. I think the preliminary estimate on that was $77,000. In the meantime, the GHCC went back and considered other ways to potentially fund such efforts. And we came to the realization that even earlier in this meeting, we discussed the levees and protection from flooding in Lower Valley. So we took a, let's say, a larger, more comprehensive view of the watershed that is Glacier Creek. And in order to get to our end goal of having disposable material on a perpetual basis, we come to realize that if we were to change the way that we manage the watershed or at least view the management of the watershed, it would open up opportunity for grant funding to help us more comprehensively take steps that allow the ongoing recovery of material for bolstering of infrastructure and protection of infrastructure from, you know, flood risk. And that would include things like levees, roads, and say airport, protection of the bridge resources, both railroad and DOT. And we find that if we were to look at it from this perspective, we have some opportunity to apply for a grant in the short term, which we have a grand deadline, it looks like, in the end of November. So our committee moved out a request for authorization to pursue a development of a grant application to be submitted to the EPA for comprehensive, it's a EPA community change grant for, that would describe comprehensive management of this watershed. So that's the summary of it. And we think that that would represent a far better value and potential opportunity to bring funds into the valley to help us get through not only those studies, but potentially the production of not only the plan, but the implementation of a mitigated recurring resource, renewable resource in the valley. So with that, if there's some questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, Brett. Any questions from the board? Comments? In the room? I'm not seeing any, Brett. Thank you for your work on this and presenting tonight.
Very good. So we'd be looking from the committee's point of view for authorization of a not to exceed amount, I suppose, that we haven't necessarily gotten to. We think that it would be in the $5,000, $10,000 range potentially. I'm not sure what that would entail, but we would be able to potentially go out and solicit responses to a very specific scope of work.
What'd you say after specific?
Yeah, very, very specific scope of work, the deliverable of which would be the submittal of a grant application package by the November 21 deadline to have Girdwood considered in the EPA community change grant program.
Thank you. Anything else for Brett? Okay, I'm not seeing any Brett. Thank you again.
Thank you.
All right, number 20. Girdwood Trails Committee Request for GBOs Resolution of Support for RTP Grant Application to Focus on Projects Related to the Suspension Bridge Project.
Yeah, so the RTP grant cycle is coming up and we want to seek a grant for helping with labor for the possible building of the suspension bridge and also the Hand Term Interpretive Center that will be built there. So we are starting that process and we will need a resolution of support from GBOs. So we'll probably return next month after a vote from GTC to move that forward.
Great, thank you, Kyle. Thank you to the rest. Any questions on that? We'll hear more anyways. Do you have your questions? Okay, next were two reports and/or the item we move to have at the end of the meeting.
Can I request a five minute reset before we move?
Are there any objections to the five minutes? Okay, I will honor a very fast five minutes, so 9:45. I know we've all been sitting here and so has everyone else. Quick five. You have five. Karen, please. You can scroll down. There's the third page. Recording.
Yeah, you're good to go.
Okay, thank you, everyone, for rejoining after a brief recess. We're going back to item number 10, which is consider applicants for GBOs seat C to recommend to Mayor LaFrance for appointment. During this item earlier, we heard from one of our applicants and another one of our applicants is in the room. So Kelly, please come forward and introduce yourself if you can.
I'm forward. I can't look at the room. I'm sorry, just come closer to that microphone. Close the microphone. Okay. My name is Kelly Akanik. I know most people here, some people I don't. Been here for nearly 20 years and in the last couple of years, gotten a lot more involved. And certainly my love of Girdwood is profound as my love of anything. And I think it's really one of the best assets that the state has. I mean, I think that our darling little valley is the best of Alaska. And I think the pressure on it is frankly unprecedented, you know, with the development coming everywhere, resort towns and pressure on Alaska. And, you know, big things happening with Alaska. And I just think, yeah, there's a lot happening. And I have the capacity and the enthusiasm to be a constructive and helpful voice and worker to keep it right side up, for lack of a better expression. I don't think there's too much to say. I mean, I can answer any questions. I can say more about my history. I can say more about what I offer. But also I can just keep it simple. I love Girdwood and I'm happy to be a part of keeping it awesome or rad or spectacular. I am short on adjectives right now.
Thank you, Kelly. Two questions next.
All right, there are two questions I was going to ask and you've already answered one of them, which is one of the important issues. Second one is just a simple one. It's if you, if you're appointed, do you, do you intend to run in the next April election?
Um, I'm, I'm certainly open to. And largely yes, but I also think it's a fantastic trial run to, to test it all out. And I'm just going to be transparent with, you know, I'm not a hard and fast. I ran once, the next election decided I would sit out and, and, you know, here we are. And I needed a little bit of a reprieve, a little mojo reinvigoration. But, but yeah, I mean, I think that the ideal is to invest, to get on board, to, to get into everything. And it's difficult for me to see getting engaged and then just stepping back because I actually have been in this brain for a number of years and that doesn't tend to be what happens. So not the most concise answer, but I also don't want to lie and say I'm a sure thing either way.
Any other questions? Go for it. Well, I want to thank you for coming, whether you could come early or not. I'm just so glad you made it tonight.
Yeah.
You're prepared to.
Yeah, sorry, I couldn't get here earlier, but.
Great.
Relate the never, as they say.
Anything else from the board? And thank you for writing your statement that we saw this week.
Yes.
Whenever it came.
I guess I, yeah, go ahead. Sorry.
I didn't have anything on my head. I just said. So if you have something else, go ahead. Right. With the will body at this point, we did say we would consider applicants in this item. With the will body at this point, we did say we would consider applicants in this item.
Jennifer. I don't propose compromise that might work with this whole executive session thing, which is that if we're comfortable trying to vote and not discussing. Then, then we could avoid the whole executive session issue because votes public anyway.
Great, thank you Jennifer. And we, since we did this recently with a different committee though, and it was fine to vote in public. And the, losing my train of thought, but it just made sense to do that. And not get in the mess of things that would require more and more work. And this is a good learning process, what we'd like to change in procedures. So what we could do is what we did in recent meetings where we each make a recommendation to staff and then we tally them in, in public. Anything, any suggestions, you were chairing that meeting, Mike, it was smooth.
Yeah, I think the, I mean, I appreciate editor's comment because the moving into executive session, you have to be very careful about the way we do that. If we're not careful, then we're, there's a reasonable likelihood that any decision we make will effectively get thrown out, we'll have to do it again. And that's just going to add a couple of months delay to this process. So I appreciate unless we, unless we have a really, a specific, a predictable reason why, an allowable reason why we go into executive session, I recommend we don't. And I don't, I personally don't think, I don't see one, see a reason.
Thank you, Brian?
You know, kind of as, as a new kid on the block, I'm, I'm kind of wishing that I had the, the counsel of my, of the board around me. Help me with some of my decisions. And you guys have been, had this for the last three years and I'm just getting, while I've been at all of the meetings, I still. And have missed out on, on some of the actions that this board has taken. And there, there's got, there needs to be a place where someone in my position can get some answers from more than one person at a time. Yeah, it is.
I wanted to add that, I wanted to thank both of our applicants for staying and coming and submitting your hat in the ring and volunteering potentially lots of time. So thank you for considering this. There's awful seats moving around, so it's almost always opportunity in Girdwood to serve.
If I, if I may, you know, I mentioned earlier in one of my previous comment meetings about timeliness. And in the, in the, in the spirit of timeliness, I am certainly ready to. Place my rankings out this evening. Regardless of misgivings.
Thank you. I think we are then ready, it sounds like, for our vote.
Sure. Can I just make a suggestion that we do one round of voting? We only have one position, so the right way to do it is to provide one name each. And if there is a majority, I three more votes for one person, then that would be easier. There are not three or more votes for one person, if it's not majority, then I think we'll have to go to a, a slightly different process.
Sounds good. Sound good?
Sure.
Okay.
Great.
Yes.
Brianna Sullivan?
Grace?
Mike Edgerton?
This is such a hard decision. Because Kelly's run before, I've gone through the ugliness of the election, I'm going to say Kelly. But I think either, great candidate.
Brian?
I agree with Mike, both are great candidates and I'm going to suggest that we. Put forward Kelly.
Jennifer?
I agree with the whole board, it's a tough decision. But again, because we have somebody with a history of having run.
Something we didn't do the last time was to actually state the person and maybe just make a motion to accept that.
Okay, so one of.
Okay, so I, we moved that, moved that we request, or we send a request to the mayor to appoint Kelly O'Connell to CC or the supervisors, JUCO or the supervisors.
So. Okay, any question on that? Thank you staff for the formal recommendation. Mayor? We can go by a send if there are an objection. We have sent to Kelly O'Connell for CC. Reputation.
Margaret? So since we have just five minutes left, I do have one other item that I want for GBOS to think about and maybe provide some direction on. We did the second budget meeting. I don't know if you feel that you need to schedule a third.
Does anyone need a third budget meeting?
Other meeting?
Kylie, you did fantastic, of course, for the budget meeting. I don't think we had multitudes of questions that need to go sorted through and there's always opportunity to have a meeting with Kyle on your supervisor.
I also felt like, really, oh, I thought that there were more ducks in the road through fire and breaking up, those two seemed to really fall into place.
Okay. So the consensus is we do not need one. On motion, we do that. Thank you. Moved into adjourned, do you have a second?
Yeah, move to adjourned second.
Okay, Brian? Thank you everyone for staying and joining tonight with.